Good evening, welcome to the Lompoc City Council meeting. This evening we had a closed session with three items. One item had to be continued because we had one council member absent, one council member sick, and I'm not able to vote on that item because it's within 500 feet of a property that I own. And then we also had a discussion with the city attorney and the city administrator with regard to the Lompoc Theater Group and the Lompoc Theater. And I'm happy to report that the council directed the city administrator and the city attorney to move forward with negotiations to create MOU with the Lompoc Theater Group to refurbish our theater. And then we also had conference with labor negotiators and there were no reportable actions. And this evening for our invocation, we have Pastor Darren Hunt. If you'd all please rise.
All right, let us pray. "Gracious, merciful, and just God, we thank you for life today and with life, the opportunity to bless others in this life. I thank you for our mayor and these council members and all who have gathered in this chamber to conduct the business of governing this great city. I ask you to bless this city, those who govern it, those who watch and protect it, and those who live and work in it. I ask you to give wisdom to our council and city staff as they lead and serve to the best of their ability, assist them in all the tasks and decisions that are before them tonight and in the coming weeks and years. In our Lord's name, amen."
And if you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[115.64][115.64](applause). And under presentations presented elsewhere on October 11th, the council and I presented a proclamation to city administrator Laurel Barcelona on the occasion of her retirement, when a great party was had and fun was had by all. On November 2nd, I presented a proclamation to the Lompoc -- no, I didn't. I went Boy Scout camping and the mayor pro tem, Ashley Costa, was nice enough to fill in for me and make the presentation to the mural society on the occasion of their 25th anniversary of putting beautiful murals on the walls of Lompoc. And now, we have someone here from the Ser Optimus Club? Come on down.[170.51][170.51](pause) This evening we have a proclamation declaring October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know it was last month, but we tried to get two for the price of one. And November is End Domestic Violence Month. And whereas October and November are the National Breast Cancer Awareness and End Domestic Violence Months, and whereas in the United States, one out of eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and an estimated 211,000 new cases of female breast cancer were diagnosed in 2009, and that mammography is recognized as the most effective method of detecting breast changes that may be cancer long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt. And now the main subject. And whereas domestic violence is a serious and violent social problem that exists in all economic segments of society, in all cultures and all countries of the world, and knowing that every nine seconds, a woman is a victim of physical assault in the United States totaling 1.3 million each year. And whereas the Ser Optimus are in a position worldwide to educate everyone, especially women, that they have the right to feel safe and live free from violence at home and in the workplace, and that they have access to breast cancer prevention and information services. And whereas the Ser Optimus Workplace Campaign to End Domestic Violence and Breast Cancer Awareness are ongoing Ser Optimus efforts to promote awareness, advocacy, and action. And whereas the Ser Optimus is an international volunteer organization for business and professional women who work to improve the lives of women and girls in local communities throughout the world, and it has launched a region-wide campaign called Color Me Pink for Breast Cancer and Purple for Domestic Violence. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby proclaim the months of October 2013 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month and November 2013 as End Domestic Violence Month, with special recognition to the Ser Optimus of the Camino Real Region for their various contributions to the many communities for advocacy, action, and awareness. And as I have said each time I present this, we all have a responsibility in our society to stop domestic violence, whether it's violence against a man, a woman, or a child. It's all wrong. And if you sit by and do nothing, you are as bad as the person who commits it. Thank you so very much for your hard work.
I would like to thank Lompoc for this award or proclamation. And I would like to also let you all know a little bit about Ser Optimus here. We began in this community in 1974, so we've been here for quite a long time. However, due to attrition, as happens with so many clubs, we have found it necessary to disband this coming year. And so I just wanted to thank everyone here and let you know that over the years, we have raised over $100,000 to give to organizations such as the Domestic Violence Solutions here in town, also Friends of the Library, Meals on Wheels, Lifeline, North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center, Boys and Girls Club, Community Partners in Caring. That's just to name a few. We thank all of our members over all the years for their hard work, to the participants in our successful bazaars, community members who actually took part and helped us out by attending these events. We also thank all of you who participated in the Dorothy Jackson Scholarship Program and the Women Opportunity Awards Program, which all these awards were made each year. The result of that was that 78 high schoolers received significant cash awards to help them with their continuing education. And we also helped 39 women who are returning to the workplace to improve their lives so they could raise their single family. We won't be donating to our community as we did in the past. However, we, those of us who were still here, decided to join the Half Century Club, Lompoc Valley of the Flowers Half Century Club, which we have done, and we decided, the Half Century Club, decided to take on our Senior Angel Tree Project. And this is something very dear to all of our hearts. We have a lot of seniors residing in community care, in Meridian, in rehab, and a lot of them get no one to visit them, they have no family left. And so we asked the community to take a name of one of those people and buy them a gift, wrap it, and drop it off at a bank. There will be information, more of that, in the newspaper tomorrow and a little later. And we actually kick off the project this Friday and Saturday at the Craft Bazaar at the Trinity Church of Nazarene. Starts at 4:00 in the evening on Friday, and again opens at 9:00 in the morning on Saturday. And we will have the tags there for all of our seniors, everyone who resides in one of those three places. And I hope you will come and help them out, be a Santa to them or an angel. And I want to thank you again, to the council and the community, for all of your support
Thank you for your years of service to the community. And now we're from library director Ashley Chavez will have an update on the implementation of the radio frequency identification technology. No, we didn't ship the librarians.
Good evening, council, city staff, and community here and at home watching. My name is Ashley Chavez. I'm the library director for the Lompoc Public Library System. And tonight I wanted to share with you an update on what we call RFID technology and how that's been implemented at the Lompoc Public Library. Just real briefly, about five years ago, I was still working for the Phoenix Public Library System, and they had just implemented RFID technology. And so I saw firsthand how amazing this technology was and how it could completely change a library and the services that libraries offer to communities. So one of the first things I did when I came to Lompoc was ask the then-library director, Molly Gerald, if there was any plans for RFID on the horizon. And so we started working towards that. And earlier this year in February during budget planning, I spoke to council about the idea and received a lot of support. So I'd like to thank all of you for helping make this possible at the library. I think it's very important. And so tonight I'll make this brief, but I do want to show you how neat this technology is. So first, what is RFID technology? On the left there you'll see a picture of an RFID tag. And radio frequency is wireless non-contact use of radio frequency electromagnetic fields to transfer data. So basically, that tag is programmed with data which can be read by antennas, and it can be tracked and electronically stored. So how are libraries using RFID technology? It might sound kind of bizarre for these little tags to make their way into libraries. Basically, what happens is these tags are put onto materials in the library, and then it actually helps the library track all of our materials. So you might, when you check out a library book, have always noticed that there's a barcode on them. Well, this is really taking the place of that barcode. It gives the libraries the ability to control inventory. And by that, I mean, for example, sometimes we have inventory wands now, and you can literally walk down a library shelf holding a wand, and it will be able to read if an item is out of place and tell you that and tell you how to fix it. It'll tell you if something is on hold, if something wasn't checked in. It's literally just walking down an aisle, holding a wand. So something that used to take hours of time, staff trying to pull this, and things that you can never find unless you literally pulled every single book off the shelf and scanned it, which as you can imagine, is something we don't have the time for. This is really revolutionizes the way that we control our inventory. It also allows for a lot of automation. I'm going to go into some more detail about that. Standardization, and with RFID, even if you have different vendors, the technology is the same. So for example, Santa Maria Library has a different vendor for their RFID, but we're still able to interact with their items even though we have different vendors. It also allows for self-checkout kiosks, and I'm going to go into some more detail on that. Automated materials handling, which basically means some libraries have very complex systems, and I'll show you a picture of this at the very end. But you can actually put an item in a book drop and it will return the item for you, give you a receipt saying it's done, and go on a little conveyor belt and get sorted into different bins, which will then allow staff to easily pick up a bin full of DVDs and go put them back on the shelf instead of just huge boxes of random materials that need to be checked in. And lastly, one of the greatest ways we're using RFID technology is what we call smart admin programs. So for example, someone could walk through the security gates of the library with an item that isn't checked out, and if for some reason we're not able to talk to the person and find out what happened, we can actually just go on our computer and find out what walked through our gates and see what was missing and handle it from there. So at the Lompoc Library, in the fiscal year 1315 budget, a request was approved to use library impact fees in an amount of $133,500 to implement this technology. We selected the vendor Biblioteca, and that is the same vendor that Santa Barbara Public Library used. And as most of you know, we are part of the Black Gold Cooperative Library System. So we're trying very hard to make sure that we are working in conjunction with our libraries that we have a partnership with. That way, in the future, we all can work cooperatively together a little bit more easily and not have to try and deal with lots of different products. And it also sort of gives us a leg up because they've been through it all before and we can lean on them for help when needed. So this project began in July 2013, so just a few months ago. And the first step was to tag our collections. So those little tags I showed you had to go on every single item in the library. And we have over 60,000 items, so you can imagine that would be a very time-consuming task. And we had 25 very dedicated volunteers and staff who finished tagging the entire collection in less than 30 days. If that sounds amazing, it's because it is. The average time it takes to tag a collection is close to three to five months. So that we were able to do this in less than 30 days is pretty amazing. And I really want to thank our volunteers. It just always reminds me of how dedicated the community of Lompoc is to helping. And without the community members who, you know, do this, I mean, there were people who were there five days a week, you know, four hours a day, spending time doing this. And, you know, to be honest, it's quite a monotonous repetitive task, so I really do thank them for their efforts. Next, we had to actually install everything. So the first thing that we put up were new security gates, and you can see a picture of them there. Some of the features of these are when they go off, it makes a very loud noise, and they light up when they're set off. And like I mentioned earlier, they can actually track what items are passed through. They also have people counters, so we can get an accurate track of how many people come in and out of the library. And, you know, before, our old gates did have people counters, but frequently they wouldn't work. And for some reason, they're always in these awkward places, and you sort of have to bend down and look at them upside down. But these are actually all digital, so you can just log in online and easily say, hey, how many people came to the library in the last three months or a year or on Tuesdays? And you can easily get that information, whereas before, that would have been a lot of manually calculating that. And lastly, just aesthetically, it created a really nice open feeling in the lobby of the library. So as soon as you walk into the library, you don't even really notice the gates, it's just this open feeling where you sort of just walk into the library and don't feel like there's a barrier. We also had three self-checkout kiosks installed, and these self-checkout machines allow people to check out their own materials. They can also pay their fines or fees, and they can use cash or credit, and they can even receive change. So, and the nice thing is too, it's not even just coin change, you can actually get bills back. So if you put in a $20 bill and you need some change, it will actually give you bills. Also, you can check details regarding your account, so you can see how many items you have on hold, you can see how much money you owe, you can go in and renew your materials, virtually everything you can do right from these kiosks. They're touchscreens and very easy to use, and the average transaction takes less than 30 seconds. You know, if you go to the grocery store and use a self-check machine, you might be familiar with, you sort of need to line the barcode up with the little red light and sometimes you don't really know where the barcode is, and it, you know, takes a couple passes. Because of the radio frequency, there is, you don't need to use a barcode. You can literally just set an entire stack of items inside the machine, and within five seconds, it's read all of them, and you don't have to do anything else. So it's very, very easy. So here's a picture of the screens. This is one of our kid-themed ones, and there's lots of different themes. So you can see this one has some animals, and it says checkout and account. It's real simple, you just touch, like I said, it's a touchscreen, so you just click on it. And on the right-hand side, it's a little bit harder to see, but there's two boxes. One is very small, and you just scan your library card under the light, and the other part that you see is kind of lit up blue. That's where you set your items, and like I said, you just set down a stack of items any which way, it does not matter, and they'll all check out to you. So the numbers. The project has come in approximately $8,000 under budget, always a good thing. And we do believe this technology will create savings of approximately $20,000 or more annually. And hopefully, that will allow for the expansion of library services in the future. So we're hoping that will increase our hours, the number of materials we're able to buy, and the programs that we're able to do for the community. And lastly, just to talk about the future, RFID technology can expand into all sorts of things beyond things like self-checkout and inventory control. One of the things that we'd really like to look into in the future is called automated materials handling, and I spoke about this a little bit earlier. And here's a picture of it. So if you look sort of towards the front, that's, this is sort of the backside of a machine. So the outside would be very aesthetically pleasing. It would be a book drop, say, on the wall of a building with a touchscreen where they just put their items in and then be able to get a receipt. This is the back end of that, would actually be in like a staff work area. And you can see this little conveyor belt drops off into different bins like I was talking about. And the way it does that is when you put the item in, it just reads the RFID tag, and it actually is smart enough to know whether it's an adult book, a children's book, a DVD, that sort of thing. And for example, if there's a hold or something wrong with it, it'll even stick it in its own little bin and automatically print a hold slip for you. So the nice thing about this is it really frees up staff from repetitive, time-consuming tasks. You know, there's library staff that are very talented and skilled, just like at any job, and sometimes you just get stuck doing these things where you're scanning a book over and over. And in my mind, that's really a waste of people's skills and abilities. I think we should be using people to better serve the community, not necessarily sit there and scan books all day. So this is something we're going to look into in the future. And the other great thing about it is, it provides a high level of accuracy because human error is exactly that. It's human error, and we're humans, and it's going to happen. But, you know, unfortunately, or not, computers can often outperform us. So it does give a higher level of accuracy, and one of the great things is it provides 24/7 service. So if it's outside and you return your books, you can renew them, that sort of thing. You know, even though the library can't be open all the time, we can still offer some services all the time. So that's one of the really nice things about it as well. So unless there's any questions, that's just a little brief update on what's going on at the library. And I'd really like to encourage everyone to come into the library and use these machines. We do have volunteers there right now to help people use them for the first time in case, sometimes it can feel a little apprehensive. And I just do want to mention, anyone who doesn't want to use the machines certainly doesn't have to. We still have staff there that you can go up to and talk to, and you don't have to use a machine if you'd rather see a person. So we wanted to make sure people still had the interaction that they desire from the library.
So is it like a childproof cap, a bunch of 12-year-olds there to show us how to do it?
You know, it's actually funny. You mentioned that there was a family there the other day, and probably an eight-year-old boy, and he just said, oh, here, Mom, I'll do it. And he took the card and just, I mean, he'd never done it before, but just scanned it, stuck the stuff inside, and said, okay, we're ready to go. So I think it just speaks to our, you know, the future generation are just born with technology in their hands, and it comes very intuitively.
Councilor Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Chavez, first of all, congratulations, I mean, coming under budget, thank you, and saving $20,000 for future projects. That's very admirable, so thank you very much for that. I'm assuming the answer is yes to these, but you mentioned you're getting a receipt for the book. Will also still get the email notices that our books are coming due within the next couple days?
Yes. If you are signed up for email notifications, you still continue to get emails. And one of the really nice things about the machine, when you press finish, it says, do you want a receipt or do you not? And so you can actually select not to have one at all. And then if you pick you do want a receipt, it gives you the option between a printed receipt and an email receipt.
Okay, good. And then the last question is, I often rent the books on tapes since I travel back and forth between Sacramento. They're great for that. And I was, when I check them out, a person at the desk will check to make sure that all the discs are there. I'm assuming that's going to be now my responsibility to check it at the kiosk.
You know, it never hurts to check it, but again, this technology is really amazing. The way the tags work is you can program them to have what we call a parent-child relationship. So we have a tag on the case and a tag on the discs, and the tag on the outside says, hey, I need to have eight tags inside in order to be a complete set. And when you put it on there, it will check to make sure everything is there, and then it'll check it for you. So, you know, one of the other nice things about that too is not only checking out, but then when you go to return it, it relieves us, the library staff, of having to flip through every, I mean, and you can imagine, especially with DVDs, to check every single thing. And not only do we have to make sure it's in there, but we have to make sure it's the right item, because, you know, people take two DVDs home and actually put them in the wrong case, and then they go on their merry way and get lost again. So this really solves all of those problems.
Well, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1439.11][1439.11](applause). And now we're going to have an additional fill-in presentation with some news hot off the bus from our police chief. I want to announce this afternoon, this is a press release from the district attorney's office. District Attorney Joyce Dudley announced today that a jury found 26-year-old Charles Alonso Owens of Lompoc guilty of all charges and enhancements, including first-degree murder committed for criminal street gang purposes, and a special allegation of intentionally using a firearm. The jury also found Owens guilty of corporal injury to a cohabitant, attempted forcible oral copulation, forcible sodomy, forcible rape, and witness intimidation committed for the criminal street gang purpose. And the case is, on June 11th, 2007, Michael Spradling was shot in the alley just outside of his home at 11:00 PM in the city of Lompoc. Two days later, he died from his gunshot wounds. The investigation eventually went cold. In 2011, Lompoc Police Sergeant Chip Arias took the case over and renewed the investigative efforts. He interviewed numerous witnesses, putting together a case that could be proven beyond a reasonable doubt against Charles Owens. Investigative techniques on the murder also uncovered that Owens was beating and sexually assaulting his girlfriend. Lompoc police officers arrested Owens on December 29, 2011, and charged him with murder of Michael Spradling, with special circumstances of a killing by a street gang member, and a special allegation of intentionally using a firearm causing his death. In late April of 2012, Owens' girlfriend came forward to disclose the physical, mental, and sexual abuse she suffered during their eight-month relationship. In May of 2012, Owens was charged with corporal injury on a cohabitant, forcible rape, forcible sodomy, attempted forcible oral copulation, and intimidation of a witness in furtherance of a criminal street gang. The cases were consolidated, and the jury trial began on October 21st this year, 2013. District Attorney Dudley commends the Lompoc Police Department Detective, Santa Maria Police Department, was Lompoc Police Department Detective Scott Casey, and Senior Deputy District Attorney Ann Bramson for their outstanding work on this investigation and prosecution without which this murder may have remained unsolved, and the brutal sexual assault of Owens' prior girlfriend would have gone unreported. Dudley says, as a result of these verdicts, a violent murderer, sex offender, and gang member will remain incarcerated for the rest of his life. And she texted me a minute ago, again, just reiterating, that she deeply appreciates the across-the-board high level of professionalism consistently demonstrated by the members sworn and non-s sworn of the Lompoc Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.[1634.11][1634.11](applause).
Chief, am I remembering correctly, that was our only unsolved murder?
That's correct.
So we have no unsolved murders, we have no cold cases?
That's correct.
We have one suspicious disappearance. Okay, city administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, audience and viewers. Agenda item number six on the consent calendar this evening regarding Resolution 588-1, authorizing staff to apply for the California Office of Emergency Services grant funding. It was brought to our attention yesterday that the grant identification number needed to be added to Section 1 of the resolution, so you have been provided an updated copy of that resolution. I just want to bring that to your attention. Also, I want to share with the community that the city contracted with West Coast Arboris to trim the Italian stone pine trees on South H. And the purpose of the trimming is actually to encourage and prolong the health and stability of the trees, and to preserve the aesthetic value of the Italian pine grove. So work will take place over several weeks to complete the trimming, and we're looking to do that late November, early December. And letters will be sent to the addresses and property owners on South H in advance of that work starting. So I do want to share that we are going to work to promote and prolong the beauty of the pine-stone grove. Further, I would like to share that we have, the fire department for the last several months has been working with the assistance of a consultant on the process of developing a master plan. That process involved looking deep into the operation of the fire department, reviewing service delivery practices, interviewing stakeholders, and identifying opportunities for improvement. Next Tuesday, November 12th, at 6:30 in council chambers, we will have a joint city council meeting and Public Safety Commission meeting to review the results of that study, the master plan study, to hear from the public and offer direction to staff on the recommendations in that draft master plan. So I encourage the community to be aware of that special meeting next Tuesday at 6:30. And furthermore, it is the season of giving that we are coming upon, so I want to share that the fire department is working on, with KSBY's Annual Season of Hope Program. And the Drive for Nonperishable Food is now going on and runs through December 13th. All donations will go to the Lompoc Food Pantry. We have donation barrels at Fire Station 1 that are waiting We have donation barrels at Fire Station 1 that are waiting for your assistance and generosity, and it does go to a good cause. In addition to that, we are also doing a Toys for Tots drive, and that kicks off on November 13th and runs through December 13th as well. So please help us with that. And finally, I do want to also commend Ashley Chavez for the work on the RFID, as well as Chief Austin and his staff. Anytime we demonstrate this commitment to use technology to increase customer service and better serve our community, we're committed, we're showing our commitment to the values that we've outlined in our Charter of Excellence. So I thank you for demonstrating our commitment to the Charter of Excellence that the city has by doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff request or announcements? Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
Okay. Now we're going to go to oral communication. This is your opportunity to talk to us on any subject for five minutes. If you are here to talk on, about an item that is on the agenda, and you can wait, that's better, because we might forget what you said by the time we get to it. If you're-- Ken, you can just come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, audience. Ken Austin, Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. It's been a while since I've been here, so I have a lot to go down, but I'll go down real quick if I can, because a lot of these things I'm going to talk about, you've all probably been in attendance at them also. But going back to the Fourth of September, I was emcee for a Veterans Breakfast at the Veterans Memorial Building with Lois Capps and her staff, and that was all done to support the veterans, and she had a lot of question-answer time with the veterans, and it was just a good event to have with our local veterans. On 5 September, I had the opportunity to meet with Morgan McLaughlin, the new director of the Santa Barbara County Ventners Association. She's new to our area, came from New York, so it was nice to talk with her, and I reminded her that Lompoc's always available if we're ever looking for another location to have the event, one of the Ventners festivals. So we're always available for that. Same day, we also had the ribbon cutting of the newly renovated Starbucks. I know Councilmember Homedall was there. Fantastic facility, did a great job down there. That same evening, we had an Economic Development Committee meeting. On the Ninth, I had the opportunity to meet with the new Lompoc Unified School District Superintendent Trevor McDonald, just to kind of welcome him and talk about the community and offer any kind of support we can offer him. So a good discussion. That same evening, we had our wrap-up meeting of the Old Town Market, talked about next year's plans, and I'm happy to say that we have a new chairperson. Chelsea Cochran will be the chairperson for next year's committee, so John Keth has got too much, and he's focusing on the festival association, so good to have her. Also, Vandenberg Air Force Base newcomers briefing, I did one on the 10th, the 24th, the 8th of October, and the 22nd of October. And that's an opportunity for me to share with these folks what Lompoc's about, what things there are to do in our area, since they're all mostly, most of them have never been here before. So it's a new arena for us. Same afternoon, I was also, got to attend a ribbon cutting for the new child development program over at Allen Hancock College. Beautiful facilities they have there, a great asset to Hancock's inventory of facilities. On the 11th September, Walmart had their grand reopening ribbon cutting ceremony, a great ceremony. They made some, also made some very nice donations to the community to include the Fire Department. So that was also a nice event. On the 12th, Teresa already mentioned, I was interviewed by the consultant for the Fire Department plan, so that was interesting to talk with them and see what kind of things, to see what they come up with as far as the plans for the Fire Department. On the 13th of September, I met with our Regional Occupational Program Director, Tony Bauer, and Jerry Winn to talk about what businesses could do to team up and develop programs within the RP program that support our community and get kids more actively involved in what's going on in the industries in our community. So if you had a chance to attend, on the 14th of September, Surf Connection held an antique board show, surfboard show. I don't know how many people made it to that, but it was really a pretty cool event, and there was some really old stuff there. And people came from LA, Orange County, to see this, because it was a collection of all kinds of great stuff. So it was a nice event, and hopefully they're going to do that again. On the 18th of September, I was part of a mock job fair at the Federal Correctional Complex to help inmates that are close to going back to the outside develop skills and interviewing for possible jobs once they get out. So that was, that was very interesting, my first time on that one. That same evening, I spoke to the American Association of University Women, just about what the great things are going on in Lompoc that I see, and there's lots of them. So 19th of September, we had our Chamber Luncheon, where we introduced our youth leadership program students for the year. It's always a great event to do that, and this year we have 17 kids in that program, and it's off and running. Same night, we had a mixer at the Oceanwood Apartments, another nice event. On the 20th of September, we held our annual Vandenberg Air Force Base Airmen's BBQ, probably served about 1,200 meals, always very much appreciated by the community out there. The commanders are there, and it's just, it's just a nice event. Expensive event, so anybody would like to help support that, please let us know. We can always use some additional funding for that one. On the 21st, that Saturday, I attended the team-building retreat for the Leadership Lompoc Valley Program up in San Luis, and spoke to that group about the program and the opportunities they're going to have to deal with that. On the 24th, I was on a radio show in Santa Maria with Karen Ledoux from the Workforce Investment Board, talking about our job fair that was actually held the next day at the Veterans Memorial Building. Some of you attended that. It was a fantastic job fair. There were about 500 people attended, over 40-some businesses, highly successful, and they're looking to do at least another one, probably in the springtime sometime, so. 27th, attended the Leadership Lompoc Valley Introduction Dinner, where they introduced their class to the, to the, to the community. I'm not sure who all attended that. I know Dirk attended that. Oh, yeah, John was there. You were the speaker. I forgot. Gosh, I hear you talk so much, I forget about it. But it's always a funny event. It's held with the mission, great time. On the 30th of September, I met with many of the chamber CEOs from the valley, from Bulton, San Ynez, Solvang, and the new Allen Hancock President, Kevin Walter, and Rick Rams from our Lompoc Center, talking about what kind of things we could do to partner in the community. And one of the things he wanted to get more involved in was to tie in the viticulture program at Hancock with the winemakers. So I connected him up with Morgan McLaughlin, and they're already talking about working some internships with their program, so. That same day, attended the event, the Family Resource Center, and at the Dorothy Jackson Center, the anniversary, I think it's 20 years of that program. So they had a reception recognizing that, the event and that program. That same evening, I attended the Bond Oversight Committee meeting, our annual meeting, and have to commend Brad. I know that's on the agenda later, but Brad and his staff have done a great job in how they present that information for the committee to review that. So it made our process much, much easier, so hopefully that'll be an easy, easy thing to get through. On the 1st of October, I met with all the county chamber CEOs in Bulton, talking about economic development. The new chamber CEO from the Santa Barbara, Ken Oplinger, is interested in organizing some chamber functions directed at economic development. A lot more to come. We've had one meeting, so there's a lot more to talk about with that event. And on the 3rd of October, Economic Development Committee meeting, I was here for 10 minutes and had to run off to our awards for the I Love Lompoc campaign. We were giving our awards out that night. That was a successful event. Hopefully you had a chance to get out and see some of those, some of those window decorations, some really kind of neat and creative stuff, and thanks to Santa Barbara Foundation for sponsoring that. Let's see, the 9th of October, Criterion Meeting, we're planning for next year. It's on its way, so I know there's some tentative dates, and I won't talk about that yet. There's nothing firm until probably another week or two before they firm up dates for that event, but hopefully the council will support that event next year, again this next year. 12th of October, we had the Santa Barbara County Ventners Fall Harvest Festival, and thank the council member Homedall for going and representing the chamber at that event as an ambassador of the chamber. He does support that, and we appreciate you going to that. It's a fun event, so. Let's see, on the 15th of October, I spoke to the, oh, I never forget remember the name. MLS stands for--
Multiple Listing Services.
Multiple Listing Services? Okay, the Realtors. And I spoke to them about what was going on in Lompoc, and so did council member Starbucks. So I think between the two of us, they got more than they probably wanted to know about what's going on, so. But that's always good to share with those folks. Let's see, on the 16th of October, Good Samaritan Ribbon Cutting at their new facility over on South L Street. Nice, nice facility to help families that are in need, and it was nice to be a part of that. On the 17th of October, we had three small business meetings preparing for our next Small Business Saturday event, which will be the 30th of November. We had meetings at 7:30 in the morning, 12:15, and then at 6:15 in the evening to try and get as many folks as we could involved in that. And again, this year, we've been told we'll get support from American Express with some goodies to give away, as well as some gift cards. So they supported us last year, and they're on board to do that again this year. On the 18th of October, I met in Solvang with, again, the chamber CEOs from Bulton, Solvang, San Ynez, as well as the film festival folks and the tourism folks from Santa Barbara, talking about the Sideways anniversary. This year in October, next year is the 10-year anniversary of Sideways. So we're talking about events to help promote that and get people moving around our communities in recognition of that. So I'm happy to be a part of that. That same evening, we had a ribbon cutting at Samantha's Restaurant. They've done a renovation in their back part of the facility for parties and those kind of things. They did a very nice job there. Hopefully the owner approved of it, but it's a nice, a nice job they did on that facility. So then on the 19th of October, the Veterans Stand Down was held, the second annual Stand Down. Great event this year, much, much smoother second year of operation. And this year, we actually had nine folks picked up in Lompoc from the Veterans Memorial Building and driven over there for the event, and then brought back. Their, their equipment was stored here they needed to store, and they went over and fully participated in those events. So last year, we didn't have anybody from Lompoc, so I think it's only going to grow as far as the popularity. And my understanding is there was approximately 500 veterans at that event, so it was pretty nice. On the 23rd of October, I had the opportunity to tour the ROP programs at Lompoc High School with our Assemblyman, Kacho Asachian, with County Superintendent of Schools, Bill Shironi, our Superintendent, Trevor McDonald, and Tony Bauer. And it's always interesting to see someone like Kacho Asachian there, being a businessman and having mechanics, and I, the mayor, you were there, weren't you? There's so many people there, I don't remember anymore. Oh, you were there. I'm sorry, Teresa. I, my wife wonders why I forget things all the time, so. But it was a great opportunity, and Kacho's a great supporter of these kind of programs in our schools, and it's nice to see him take an interest, and he definitely does. 24th of October, we had a mixer Embassy Suites. That was a lot of fun. The 28th, I met with Heather Bedford. We're working with her to do, offer trips. We have a trip actually leaving the end of this month for San Antonio. We're working on one to the East Coast in the springtime, to Washington DC, that area, and then we're also working on one for Tuscany next year at this time. That same, that same day, I had the opportunity to be a speaker at the Lompoc Valley Middle School Career Day. A lot of folks, probably 30 different folks there, and I know the mayor was there for that one, I remember seeing him. So that was a good one. On the 2nd of November, ribbon cutting at the Willis House over on L and College. Dale Willis and his wife, Nadine, have opened that facility and are renting spaces out for folks that are in need at a reasonable price, and it's a very nice facility. If you have a chance, please go check it out. I'm almost done, I'm hurrying. Attended the dinner for the Murals Society the 25th, a nice event. 25 years, it's amazing it's been, it's been that long, but that's been a great asset to our community, and you'd be amazed at the number of folks we get that come into the chamber that are here just to see our murals. It really is amazing, and it's outstanding, so that was a great, great event. And also, on November 1st, I met with Teresa and Lucille to talk about our strategic plan that we'll be bringing back to you guys probably in December, correct, Teresa? Okay? And last but not least, on 4 November, another Toys for Tots campaign with the Community Action Commission, formerly run by the Marine Corps, was kicked off at the Veterans Memorial Building. So their function's on the way and going, so. Any questions?
Okay.
And along the way, Ken's been working with us on a number of economic development opportunities, too, so the things we can't talk about. Thank you, Ken.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to talk to us at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, we'll come back to the consent calendar. We have Item 1, Approval of the Minutes. These are items that are just kind of busy work for us. We have approval of expenditures of payroll for $1 million. We have three expense vouchers totaling about $1 million, one. I confess, I forgot to look, so if there's a check on there to Smithy's Towing or Lompoc Lock and Safe, I abstain from those. Number three, the city of Lompoc Park Maintenance and Assessment District, number 2002-01, Statement for the Period of July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Item four, the Final Acceptance of Project FY13-S3, the 2013 Cross Gutter Curb Ramp Project at Various Locations. Item number five, Award of Project Number FY13-S4, the 2013 Laurel Avenue Street Rehabilitation Program. Item number six, the Proposition 1B California Transit Security Grant Program, application with the corrections that the city administrator discussed. And those are the items. Is there any item that the council member would like to have pulled at this time? Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to pull, I just want to make a comment before we put this. Item number five, the Laurel Avenue Street Rehabilitation. In addition to Laurel, Laurel Avenue repair, a portion of this repair was at River Park, where if you call the road leading to the Veterans Memorial, back towards the end of it, is, there's roots of trees going underneath it, it's almost like going over the Rocky Mountains getting over there. Part of that stretch of our road has also, or will also be repaired during this time, so that, I think everyone is looking forward to that, so.
And I think it's the only place in Lompoc where there are 50-speed bumps in less than a mile. Yeah, and there's one really big one. Okay, are there any other items? Councilmember Homedall.
Just one question, not to hold up, but in the report from the city of Lompoc Park and City Pool, the one thing I didn't see in all their suggestions was anything to do with the tennis courts. And I had a person make a comment how bad they are, and I did go by and look at them, and the tennis courts look terrible. And they, the weeds are coming in between them and such as that, plus there's places if you hit the ball, it'll go three times other places. So I think, I'd like to have them come back with a recommendation, what they could at least get won. But all of them, none of them look real good, so.
That's all. Thank you. Yeah, the old asphalt ones are, I don't think we're going to bring them back to life, but the concrete ones. We did do some fence repairs there over the last five months, so there's been some improvement in the fences. Okay, with that, I'd accept a motion in a second.
I'll move that we accept the, all the recommendations on the items, the consent calendar.
I'll second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes 3, 0, and 2 absent. Okay, unfinished business. A public meeting to consider establishment of the Lompoc Tourism Improvement District. Lady? Lucille?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is just a recommendation to the city council to hold a public meeting to accept public comment regarding the proposed Lompoc Tourism Improvement District. As the council recalls, at the October 15th meeting, a resolution was adopted declaring the intention to establish the LTID, and this meeting is the next step in that process. Following this, there will be a public hearing for adoption at the December 3rd council meeting with the adoption. If it's adopted, then it will become effective January 1st of 2014. So with that, I'd like to proceed with the meeting and continue on this process.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Is there anyone here in the public that would like to address us on this subject? This is the second reading of three with regard to this. Going, going, gone. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll come back to the council. Is there, are there any questions or discussion? I realize, just so the rest of you know, we've already gone over this once, but we have to do it three times to go, to move through the complete process. So that's why we're not spending too much time, because last time we got the full dog and pony show. Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion. It's your turn.
Mr. Mayor, I'm-- Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendations.
And a second.
I'll second.
And is there any other discussion at this time? Seeing no lights, can we vote, please? And that passes three, zero, and two absent. Item number eight, the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lompoc and the Charlotte Benton Trust, the Lompoc District Libraries Foundation, the Friends of the Public Library System regarding the Charlotte's Web Book Mobile, Mobile Library Project. It's changed names on me. Ashley, again.
Thank you. I'd like to mention one minor change in the MOU that was presented to you. In paragraph twelve, well, let me back up a little bit. This was written when Laurel Barcelona was still the city administrator and so in paragraph twelve, there is references to the city administrator as a her. And so we would just like to make a minor change, his slash her, to cover ourselves for a future city administrator. But otherwise, the staff report is an accurate representation of the status of this project.
Why don't you give the audience the, the five-minute version of this?
Five-minute version of the fifteen-year project? I can do, okay. Quite a number of years ago, Charlotte Benton donated her house and property in a sizable trust with the intent that it be made into a children's library. And without going into a lot of details, that did not prove to be feasible for several reasons. Once the, the house and property were to be made into a library, it was realized that the house was actually not a feasible library for several reasons, mainly because it was to the point where it just kind of needed to be torn down, basically. Couldn't sustain itself as a public building with the kind of traffic that you would get with a library. So it was decided to fundraise for a new library and you have to remember, this was quite some time ago, before the economy was in its current state, so it seemed like an actually fairly feasible goal at the time. But after many years, it just wasn't able to really find any traction. Although I would like to stop and give credit to the fact that there was a lot of work put towards this project over the years and I'd especially like to say thank you to previous library director, Malley Gerald, who spent a lot of time working on this and a lot of library board of trustees, trustee members over the years, writing grants and pursuing funding. And there was actually a fairly large amount of funding towards this, but after RD eight is all, it kind of went back to square one. So the Benton trustees asked that some, you know, recognizable progress be made or they would have to start looking at the, the property and trusts going towards some other sort of purpose. And so at the time, Ms. Gerald and I sat down together and came up with the idea of a bookmobile instead of a physical building. And while it isn't as amazing as a building would be, I do think it actually will serve the community of Lompoc really well. One of Charlotte Benton's goals was to have this library on the south side of Lompoc where children might not be able to actually walk to the library where they didn't have transportation. So she really wanted to serve that part of Lompoc. So we thought with a bookmobile, we'd be able to serve the entire community of Lompoc and focus it on children and really still sort of fulfill her dream, but with, with the actual funding that we currently have in hand. So I think it's going to work out really well. And it was almost a year ago, believe it or not, that I came to city council and presented the bookmobile concept and that did, there was a public meeting and quite a bit of discussion on it and was received with a lot of enthusiasm. So we really look forward to making the project happen. But before that could, we had to work out a legal document that would recognize what the project has turned into over the years so that way we can move forward with an accurate reflection of what we were actually trying to achieve. So as you can imagine, trying to get four different parties to agree to one legal document can take a little bit of time. So I'm here with that document, with everyone's agreement. And as soon as we receive approval, we'll be able to move forward with the construct, designing, construction of this bookmobile and it will hopefully be completed within a year.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council at this time? I think we're all pretty up on it, okay.
Yeah, I just.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, you know what?
This is just, I, I think I know the answer to this, but it's for our legal counsel. This was approved by four different attorneys, four different groups. Now we've wait, made one minor change, just taking and her out of it. I'm assuming we don't have to send it back for reviews by the attorneys.
That's correct.
Good.
Okay, thank you, Ashlyn. Now I'm going to open the, the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to talk to us about this? Wow, you guys are really quiet. For those of you at home, there's really a big audience in the back row, so they're, they're going to come along on, on one of these items. Okay, seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and we'll come back to the council. Is there, are there any other questions? Then I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move authorizing the interim city administrator to sign the MOU.
And a second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, could we vote, please? And that passes three, zero, and two absent. And now for the really exciting stuff. Item number eight, a review of the investment policy of the City of Lompoc. Brad, how is it that you get the, you know, the most exciting topics?
It's part of the finance part of government, have to keep an eye on things and regulatory requirements, a lot of restrictions. Mayor, councilmembers, I'm actually going to hand this off to Dean Albro. Dean is our accounting supervisor. He came on board in June of two thousand and twelve, having come over from the administration at the federal prison complex in other side of town. Had a career over there and has brought his expertise to us and has been very helpful on many issues since he's come. And he's really working on the governmental side of the house as opposed to Melinda Wall, who's our financial services manager, who takes care of the accounting for our utilities and enterprise funds. Since the investment policy falls within the governmental side of things, this was a great opportunity to bring Dean up to speed on staff reports and presentations. I'll let Dean go through the staff report. I have a brief presentation after that and we can answer questions once we're done.
I know it's pretty exciting. Like, my wife, I was telling her the things that we're doing for the investment policy and she goes, very sincerely too, is, oh honey, I'm glad you enjoy that. Thank you for letting me come up here and talk about the adoption of Resolution five, seven, eight, the investment policy. We have three recommendations to changes to the policy. One is to do away with reviewing the annual policy every year unless there's going to be some changes to the policy and to establish an oversight committee to make sure we're in compliance with the policy and, and making good choices with our investments. Another recommendation is that we move to changing our investment strategy, taking a little bit of our money out of our local agency investment called LEAF and, which is very short-term and moving into something more of three, two shorter investments that would yield a little bit higher rate of return while still safeguarding our principal. The final recommendation is that we adopt Cal Trust as our, another investment option to LEAF. Cal Trust is a California Joint Powers Authority, which gives the, this local agencies the opportunity to pull their money together and make investments. Starting with the, the changing of implementing an oversight committee. Government code pretty much states that, you know, there's, that you may bring the policies to council. It's not, I'm not required. I think that a better way of utilizing this is to set up an oversight committee and actually develop, you know, a more, a better strategy. With that, the oversight committee would give to the council on a regular quarterly basis, types of investments, the issuers that we're buying, purchase dates, maturity, rates of return. So with an oversight committee, you're going to get a lot more information on where we are with things. The next change that we're proposing is to, like I said, change the investment strategy. Since two thousand and eight, our city has taken a very conservative approach by leaving all our money in LEAF, which is quite short-term. Made pretty good sense at the time, you know, with the, the banking crisis and the feds cutting back on, on interest rates. And the only problem is with the current rates dipping down to about a quarter of a percent with the Fed holding the shorter-term interest rates very, very low, it's hard for us to actually keep up with the investment costs that the cities, you know, just, just to maintain the investments. So one of our recommendations is that we move to a three-year layering process where we actually would buy a little bit of three-year maturity instruments now and just keep buying them so we will always get a return and it'll help us, you know, maintain a liquidity so we can meet our current obligations too. The final recommendation, like I said, was to adopt Cal Trust. Basically, another alternative to LEAF. Couple of good things that Cal Trust has that LEAF doesn't is they don't have a maximum. Bearing any expected changes, we're more than likely going to exceed the fifty thou, fifty million maximum that LEAF has, so it's something that we want to look at some good alternatives that still are in the same government guidelines and very safe, so. Overall, I think this, this policy is really a very positive move. It's going to, you know, have a good fiscal impact on the investment pool. And I think also having the oversight committee would also help, you know, put some good controls into effect and make sure we're moving in the right direction. I know Brad has some really good slides, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you.
And Brad, would you tell everyone who Cal Trust is, please?
Cal Trust is actually a JPA, as Dean mentioned, and it's a JPA of two entities, actually more than that, but the California State Counties Association and the Cal League of Cities joined together to create the California Communities Group, which does a lot of different things. One of which was to create this JPA that provides for a investment pool outside of LEAF because LEAF is controlled by the state, has some restrictions that are not necessarily advantageous. For instance, you can only do transactions with them fifteen times a month and once you're done, you can't access your money again. Cal Trust has very few restrictions like that and allows us to invest in similar products that they have, but they also have more than just what LEAF has. LEAF has just one pool. Cal Trust has a money market fund, a short-term pool, a medium-term pool, and at some point in time in the future, they'll have a long-term pool that's up to five years. So it, it provides a little bit more flexibility and also is what Dean mentioned is we are, as we gain some of our reserves back in our utilities, we are going to be pressing up against the fifty million limit that LEAF has, which is one of the decision factors that we use to decide this might be the time to go back into the market for individual investments. But it also is a practical need because we need another avenue to invest the funds we have. So that's what Cal Trust is for, is it's kind of a relief valve, if nothing else, so. I'm just going to go through a couple of slides just to kind of highlight why we got to the decision of starting a layered policy. We're just starting. We have, none of the investment team that we have here, none of the management team we have in finance right now have done investments with the city here. So we will be starting off with baby steps to make sure that we set up the right structure to make sure it follows the policy and provides as good a return as we can get. Dean mentioned the quarterly report to the council. Sorry about how this looks, but every single month, about forty-five days after the end of the month on a, most of the year, the finance department provides council and administration with a four or five-page report that shows where our cash and investments are held, whether it's LEAF, bank accounts, fiscal agents, and then also gives you a breakdown of each individual fund. This is only one page of about five. But this is actually the report that is used to satisfy the investment policy's requirement to provide feedback to the council and in the future to an oversight-type committee. The second page of this report actually is set up to provide information on direct investments, interest rates, yields, purchase price, sales price, market value. It's just the last five years, it's just been a blank page because we haven't had those investments. But I just wanted to show this to you because it is something that's being provided and is, makes, gives you what the investment policy is stating that we do. Next couple of slides are actually in the staff report. This is a graph over last year of the investment yields on various investment products. We have most of our funds either in LEAF or our bank accounts. This red line is LEAF and you, as you can see, over last year, it's been slowly dropping. These over here are in basis points. So right back in August, we were getting about forty basis points, which is four tenths of one percent. Not very good considering back in the eighties when you have five percent passbook accounts. This is ten percent of that level. So we've seen our investment earnings drop over time and right now, it's about twenty-five or thirty basis points. Not really enough to sustain the, just the basic cost of running our bank accounts and the staffing to manage the, the process. The investment policy actually has a guideline, a benchmark, that we get at least what the blue line is, which is the three-month T-bill. Obviously, that's almost, it's less than ten basis points, so it's very virtually nothing. We're looking to try to get a little bit higher than what LEAF is while maintaining security of our, of our principal and it could be necessary to run the operations of the city. Next slide, basically it shows you why we're asking to come forward with a, starting to invest a portion of our portfolio outside of LEAF. Up until two thousand and eight, we were investing in outside securities. Back then, interest rates were in the five, six, seven percent range, depending on the length of the investments. And agency-wide, for these three years, oh six, oh seven, oh seven, oh eight, and oh five, oh six, we were making over two million dollars a year in annual interest and yield. Since that time, since the Great Depression hap, Great Recession happened, sorry. Slip of the tongue. It's dropped down to approximately where we are at, which is this kind of green line, which is our investment costs for managing the portfolio, managing our cash that we have on hand. Until, at this point in time, for this last fiscal year, we've actually, basically haven't earned any, any interest at all because it's all been used up by the cost of running the programs. This cost would likely not increase any, it wouldn't increase any, any more than just the general cost increases over time, just because we're starting to invest more directly. That cost is already taken care of in our cost allocation plan. This is kind of a snapshot of what we are suggesting the investment policy do. The, the red line, the blue line at top is our total investable cash, cash and investments. And as you can see, it's projected to grow, grow slightly over time because And as you can see, it's projected to grow slightly over time because we're anticipating our reserves in all of our funds to become a little bit more healthy and to meet our minimum obligations of roughly 90 days of cash on hand. Even though we're talking about having a 36-month investment pool of about somewhere between $7 and $9 million, it won't all happen at once. We'll do it, the simplistic way we're going to do it is we'll, every single month, we'll invest $100, $200,000 for 36 straight months in three-year term investments. So by the middle of the term, we'll have half, half of our goal. We won't have the whole amount invested outside of LEAF until the very end of the term. And at, and at that point in time, we'll just allow the investments to mature, roll them over into a new three-year product, and we'll just have a continual churn to allow us to maintain our liquidity. That way, we can keep roughly the 10 percent in outside investments, meet our objective of liquidity, and the security of the investment portfolio is really the differential here, that this amount will always be available within LEAF or CalTrust, and it's just this one, this little bit here that we're trying to increase the overall yield. This graph is not over time, but it's over different incremental increases in our investment return from about 0.25 percent up to about 1.1 percent. If we're able to increase our return by 1.1 percent on just this $7.2 million, we'd be able to increase our overall investments to about $180,000 a year from $120,000. That's pales in comparison to how we were doing back in 2006 when we were making $2 million. But the important thing is out in this area, we're actually covering our investment costs. So we're able to bring value back to the individual funds of the city that have investable cash. So they're not actually paying for the product, they're actually getting some benefit from Now, this questions, as Dean mentioned, there's really three changes. One change to the policy is to reflect what the government code said back in 2003 when they eliminated the shall and created a may for having an annual review of the investment policy, adding CalTrust as an investment product. And mainly just as a recommendation, feedback to start investing outside of LEAF to boost our returns incrementally. So Dean and I are here to answer questions.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Wilkie, it's, I know it's all water under the bridge, but was it in 2008 that we just sort of panicked and pulled our money back?
Well, it actually wasn't a panic because back in 2008, when Lehman Brothers went under, we had investments out in the world that may have been at risk. So my predecessors, over time, dwindled their, the investments on purpose. And it actually did us a good service because we were still invested in LEAF. And back then, LEAF, LEAF is a trailing entity, so it was still earning 5% or 6% interest in 2008. Since it's got a three-year maturity roughly, it took three years for it to start dwindling down to 1% or 2%. So we were able to continue earning interest that was available in 2008, but we got out of the market. And I think it was a wise decision at the point in time because we may not have known what investments we had that might have been at risk of the underlying company going under.
And I appreciate that because when we look at what some of other cities are going through right now, at least we, I mean, we probably took, well, I'm going to base it as a very ultra-conservative investment policy there, just to conserve our capital. Is that, would that be accurate?
That's one thing, and on a practical side of things, Dean came aboard in 2012. We didn't have anybody in that position, full-time staff person, since 2006. So we really didn't have the staffing even to have an active portfolio at that point in time. I think that was part of, part of the decision was we had to look at our resources, and we didn't have resources to do it. And now we do.
Okay. Well, and I appreciate that because when you look at that, it almost looks like we just took the money and put it under a mattress for the past, you know, five years and hope for the best. But I'm glad to see that Mr. Albo's on board right now. It looks, looks like we're going to be turning the corner, so.
Yeah.
So thank you for your work, Mr. Albo.
Councilmember Hohdahl?
Yeah, I just want to follow up with that. It looked like that we had to go out and do some investing because everybody who had any money to invest, the interest was going down so bad that you had to go out and find something else. I'm glad you did, and glad the way it worked out because there was no interest out there, I think, on any major own, so.
There was talk at some points in time that treasuries would actually have a negative yield. So even treasuries were, you'd have a safe investment, but you'd have to pay for it, basically, so.
Okay. Do I have any questions?
I have one more thing. I can't, I can't not say this, but I've been wondering why the news is here, and I have to admit, I would think it would be for this item, so.
Optimism dawns eternal. Okay, now we're going to come to the public comment on this. Is there anyone here who would like to talk to us about this very exciting subject? That was easy. No one? So we'll come back to the council. I have one, one thing I'd like to ask, to talk to council about, and that would be on page 10 of the actual policy. And I have something there I'd like to change. So page 10 of Resolution 587813, and that would be the Investment Oversight Committee, and it currently reads, "The city hereby authorizes but does not direct the city administrator to establish an investment oversight committee." I believe that now, when we're going out into the world, we need to authorize and direct the city administrator to establish the Oversight Committee. That it isn't optional if we're going to go out and begin this investment process. Based on staff's recommendation, we need to have the investment committee, and we need to direct that committee be in place. And I'm just seeing if anyone else has a contrary thought. Okay. So authorizes and directs. See, Dean, you sold it to me. Good job. The other question I would have, Brad, it seems like you might get a little more money if you invested a little more money. Did you select that amount for a particular reason, the $7 million?
Not really, but since we haven't done this, I thought that would be a good start. The second item that's part of the policy is liquidity, and depending on what we want to do in the next three or four years, I didn't want to tie up too much. So that's going to be something we'll have to probably run by the committee once it's formed and organized, is to see what the best level is. And that's going to be something we look at going down the road.
So the $7 million's not set in cement, that's just a starting point?
That's just, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. That was how I read it, but I just want to hear you say it. Okay, with that one change, then I would move the staff recommendation and adopt Resolution 587813 to make the, change our investment policy, items one, two, and three.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that with the correction to, or the correction with, to paragraph or item number 13.
Correct.
Yeah. So I'll second it then.
Didn't create a problem for you, did I, City Attorney? You have to speak into the microphone.
Your change or the whole thing?
No, the change.
It, it doesn't create a legal significant problem, it's just, it takes away some flexibility. And if that's what you want to do, that's what you can do.
Okay. I thought you were grimacing a minute ago, so I was just checking back with you. Okay, is there any further discussion? And then could we vote, please? And that passes 3-0 and 2 absent. Good evening. Welcome to the Lumpoke City Council meeting. All of you were hiding in the back row.
So far.
So far. And could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Hohdahl?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck. Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Prostham Ashley Costa. Mayor John Lin.
Here. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Starbuck is going out getting some elk for us in Idaho, which he promised to bring back and share, and our best wishes for Councilmember Costa, who is quite ill this evening and hopes to join us later. She's hoping to be here for, for the open session. Oral communications, your moment to give us five minutes on any subject, and I bet I know what subject you're here on, so come on down.
Not my chamber report either, so.
I know.
Ken Ostini, Lumpoke resident, Mr. Mayor, council members, and I'm just here to briefly talk a little bit about the Theater Project group and that discussion you're going to have here shortly in closed session, and encourage you to support that group and their efforts to, to take over that facility and move forward with that. I've been very impressed with the efforts they've put together in trying to make that, that group come together and, and do something with that facility, because I believe something can be done with that, and I think they've shown that. And I think once that facility is turned over to them, that they then can make, really move forward and make some things happen. Also, would like to encourage the council to be very proactive if they can with the State Department of Finance in trying to get the $700,000 lien, I guess, at least kept at a bay, you know, abated until we can get this project going and, and keep the same kind of use in that facility. So encourage you to be proactive with them and, and help this group be successful, because I think they can be successful, so. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and council members, Al Thompson, and Lumpoke is celebrating 125 years. If you divide that by five, take that answer and double it, that's about how long I've been here, like 50 years, near that. And the town bills itself as the city of arts and flowers, and as most of you are, I'm wearing the badge that has the word "I," and then the symbol of a heart, and then the word Lumpoke. And we all know what the symbol means. At the city center stands a unique old theater building with near-perfect acoustics. I've been there many times in the past. A building which could again lend itself to the arts part of the city slogan. There is a grassroots group of people ready to make that happen. I would ask that council consider that that building and that group of people are both a physical and a literal part of the heart of my badge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and city council men tonight, there's no woman, so I can, I can say that all right. Name's John Silva, fourth-generation Lumpokean. Number one thing, if the building's knocked down or destroyed, we have another empty lot. We have empty lots all over town. The biggest blight in downtown is empty lots, you know, empty stores, but empty lots. It's just terrible. The cost of demolition, seven, $800,000. Somebody's going to pay for it. I'm assuming it's a city, nobody else has any money that's involved in this thing. It's astronomical. I mean, you've got to weigh between how much it's going to cost to repair and how much it's going to cost the city versus demolition. I think you're better off saving than demolishing it. You know, it's an old-town lynchpin, it always has been. We're always talking about spending money on, on the old town, on which we have spent a lot of money, and this is one building that has not been spent enough money on it. It has over the years, but improperly. And I think with this group that's, that's formed to try to save this building, I think they have the resources and they can do it. You know, everybody's going to wax nostalgia, we used to go there, I went there, everybody went there. went there." Everybody can come up with these ideas about how it used to be and whatever. That doesn't help us right now. What I'm looking at is nostalgia in the future, where my kids can say, "I used to go to that building," "we went to the building," "my dad went to the building." I'm looking at the future nostalgia, not the past. I mean, let's try and do everything we can to save this historic building. So many other towns in the area have done it, one way or the other. Hopefully, it can be done, and me and most of the old-time Lompokians would really appreciate if it's possible you guys could see your way through that. Thank you.
John, are you on the committee?
Pardon?
Have you joined the committee?
I'm not on the committee.
Come on, gotta get on.
You want him to be on the committee?
Yeah, I want him to be on the committee.
Bob Manning, ladies and gentlemen of council and mayor. I think it was 2004, there was a study of downtown. I happened to be on the committee at the time, and Kristi McAvoy gave a report, you guys have it, and I remember vividly the final meeting in the Chamber of Commerce Building, Dwayne, you were there. And John, I think you might have even been there.
I was there.
And Kristi made it as simple as she could. Every downtown revitalization has a lynchpin, and yours is a theater. I think that says it all, right there. I just would encourage you guys to turn it over to a nonprofit that has the ability to get it done, and I've talked to a lot of them, I think they do have the ability to get it done. So, give it hell.
You joined the committee also, right? Good.
Hello. My name is Mark Harrier, and I was born and raised about a block away from the stage of the Lompoc Theater. And I used to go to the Saturday matinees and loved it, and I'm here to tell you what it personally means to me. I saw a movie called Music Man, and I saw that movie twice in a row, and at the end of it, I decided then and there that I wanted to be an actor. And so I pursued that dream, and I acted here in town, at the high school, went to PCPA, acted there, trained professionally, went to New York on Broadway, off Broadway. I did movies, I did TV, I was in the number-one play in New York at the same time I was starring in the number-one movie in the world. But none of that was as thrilling to me as the fact that the movies I acted in and a movie I directed actually played at that theater. So for a small-town boy to actually see his work in the theater he grew up in, it's profound experience. And I would very much like to aid in letting the kids that are in this town now have the same sort of opportunity to have the dreams that I had. I know you guys have been through hell trying to get this done, but I've been back in town since May, and I found the Theater Project. I've been communicating with them and now started working with them. I'm very impressed. I'm bringing all of my experience, I'm bringing all of, I have a considerable amount of friends who are very, very good at what they do, they're already lining up to do pro bono work with us and to help us get this going, but we can't do anything without the keys. So I want to encourage you, for the 10-year-olds that'll see a dance recital there and go, "I want to do that," or they'll see Buddy Guy there and say, "I've never heard the blues played like that, I really want to do that," or they'll see a Tejada band, or they'll see a salsa band, or a country western. It will transform this town. We know what it will do economically, that's a given, it's always done it before, but what you don't maybe understand, or I want to encourage you to understand, is what it will do to us emotionally, what it'll do to us psychically. Kids will be able to dream and see that their dreams can come to life. So I encourage you to support this group. We have a leaky roof, if we get the keys, we can patch it real fast and we can do things. So, thank you very much for your time, I hope you support them.
Thank you, Mark.
Ron Box, citizen of Lompoc. I went to school with Mark, and I just wanted to let you guys know, the property taxes have been one of the problems, and I did mail off today an assessment appeal, so hopefully we'll get those taxes lowered for the 2013 year. So things are moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. There's a few of you left. No? Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, we will now be moving to closed session. We will have conference with real property negotiators regarding APN 085033007 and four more, city negotiators Theresa Gallivan, interim city administrator, Joseph Penone, city attorney, Kevin McKeon, public works director, negotiating parties, level-three communications, we won't be able to do that one, because we don't have three people that can talk about it, so that one will be moved to the 12th. Okay? And then number-two conference with real property negotiators, property 112, 122 North H Street, which is what these folks were speaking about, negotiators Theresa Gallivan, interim city administrator, and Joseph Penone, city attorney, negotiating parties of Lompoc Theater Project under negotiation price and terms of payment. And then item number three, conference with labor negotiator, city designated representative Beth Lam, over B, Brad Wilkie, and Colin Tanner, employee organization, the IBEW, and we will see you at 7:00. Okay, if we come back to order, and we will be, on item number 10, the possible ban on the possession of synthetic spice and/or synthetic bath salts. And before we begin, I want to acknowledge Dale Welsh, who about a year and a half ago brought this issue to my attention, the city administrator's attention, and then it went to the chief's attention, and we've been working our way forward ever since. And I need to acknowledge my wife, who went out and bought the first round of spice to find out how easy it was. And now, the chief, who's actually going to get something done.
Mr. Mayor, member of the city council, Chief Ralston, I want to first make a couple of comments. Two things that are coming up that our police department is involved with here in the near future, a Salvation Army kettle drive that's coming up in the holiday season, and also a turkey drive that is a combination, is a cooperation between the Good Samaritan, Victory Outreach, Food Pantry, and Pastor Doug's City of Promise, and it's going to be November the 22nd, and I believe it's going to be in front of City Hall, in front of City Hall, it's a Friday evening, so. And with that, we're going to get started on this presentation. My drug recognition expert, Joe Stetz, sergeant with our department, has not arrived yet, so he'll be kicked down to an agent here shortly. But, no, in all seriousness, this is an issue that was brought to us in the city, but it's much bigger than just the City of Lompoc. This is a new, relatively new drug, or type of drugs that are on the market and in our country now, and in our City of Lompoc. We call them bath salts and spice, and what we're asking is the city council to give us direction on putting together an ordinance so that we can ban the possession of bath salts and spice, and also ban the sale, and the possession for sale of bath salts and spice in our city as a city ordinance. What are bath salts? Bath salts is a term used to describe a number of designer drugs, often containing a substitute, what we call, or what are known as cannabinoids, and I'm not going to get into a lot of the technical pieces of this, because it's, some of it's even beyond me, it's a scientific, very scientific procedure, breaking down chemicals and pulling out atoms that change the molecular structure, and so that these scientists are being able to skirt legal guidelines and laws by changing molecular structures of products. But, these are very similar to amphetamine and cocaine, and they, the name derives from instances where the drugs were being sold under the guise of being called bath salts. They're white crystals resembling what somebody would see as a bath salt or an Epsom salt, and that's where it got its name. And this is what bath salts look like in some of their, in one form. Between 2000 and present, chemists began to use the cannabinoids in designer drugs as the compounds were legal in many of our jurisdictions. And again, and without going into a lot of detail, the cannabinoids were found in plants, and methadone is a synthetic form of a cannabinoid. These drugs were marketed as bath salts, they came first to the attention in the United States in around 2008, and most of these were being shipped over from the Orient and India and some of the European countries, and that's how they, they came into our country via the internet. Bath salts are sold primarily in 50-milligram packets, they can be purchased online, some of the names that are out there include Purple Wave, Zoom, Cloud Nine, and there are many others. They're put on the packaging "not for human consumption," and we'll show you a picture of those shortly.
...you two remember the name of Freddie Sharp, who has actually taken bath salts in the past? Now, I'm fascinated with bath salts, didn't know much about it until we covered the story about the cannibal who was high on bath salts, but it kind of shows you just how destructive and damaging it is to you when you're on it.
Well, you know, Anna, I got a sense that it might be pretty destructive to you...
No, I get it.
...when the guy in Miami took off his clothes and started biting the face off of the homeless guy. I just sense it might be a little destructive.
I have to be honest with you, that didn't serve as a deterrent.
Oh, you thought, hey, you know what, that dude's at least out there. I mean, he's having fun, until the cops shot him like 18 times.
But, no, the thing is, with that video, you don't really see, I mean, you know what he's doing, but you don't really see it, right? In this video, you see Freddie Sharp basically being tied down because he has overdosed on bath salts. Let's watch.
We see the video of you, and it looks like you're having these wild hallucinations.
It's a very scary thing, actually. Whenever that all that was going on, that was my overdose, and it really actually scared me pretty bad, because I was hallucinating about being in a mental institution, in a state asylum, basically, and something about Jason Voorhees and getting possessed by him, and I felt, I did feel all kinds of crazy. It felt like a p Union Dew was coming down on me, and like that I was possessed, and I couldn't try to stop whatever was in me.
Yeah, you were kind of scared? Please, if that didn't completely scare the living daylights out of you, I don't know what will. And, especially with the video where he's flipping out, Freddie Sharp actually looks like a zombie. You know what I'm saying?
I know.
Like, because now people are talking about the zombie apocalypse, and how all these people are eating, and you're like, man, are you crazy? I can't, what my mind cannot fathom is that there are people who think their lives suck so much that for a little bit of a high, they're going to do bath salts, which makes you want to eat somebody's face off? Or that you're Jason, or Stark, what the hell was going on in that dude's mind?
You know, what's incredible about these drugs is it gives you like this crazy sense of physical power, right? Where you feel like you're a bullet, you can beat someone up to death, you can bite someone's face off. It's kind of crazy. I was talking to John Idrol about this, because, I mean, I know I'm not strong, but I get the sense that when you do bath salts, you get like this insane sense of strength where you can do anything, and also, John made a good point about how, you know, usually when you're doing something strenuous, you stop when you start to feel a little pain, but when you're on this drug, you don't really have a sense of that. You feel like you're invincible.
Yeah, and according to the reports, they actually do sometimes exhibit superhuman strength, and that's partly because they think they can, and that goes to the power of the mind as well, but the mind being abused here eventually leads to zombies. So, don't do it, man. I can't make this clear enough, okay? You will eat your friend's face off. Don't do bath salts.
Okay. Hundreds of other drug, designer drugs or legal highs have been reported, including artificial chemicals such as synthetic cannabis, which has been, has the street name of spice. So now we're going to switch from the bath salts to the drug spice. This drug, one particular one called Crazy Clown, is making its name known in Brunswick, Georgia, and we actually found a location in our city that had this yesterday. People were hospitalized after reacting to a form of the incense or spice that was smoked, and of the eight people admitted to the hospital, seven were released, an eighth remained in critical condition. And this is what Crazy Clown looks like, the package. Again, it's a little foil-type package, and on the back, "Not for human consumption, must be 18 years of age to purchase." These are some other spice packages, K2, Spice, Vulcan, Fire, these are just different names of some of the stuff. And Gold Spice apparently is one of the more popular of them. So spice refers to a wide variety of herbal mixtures that produce experiences similar to marijuana, excuse me, and are marketed as safe, legal alternatives to that drug. Sold under names, again, many of them, I mentioned, Moon Rocks is another one, Fire were skunk. These products contain dried shredded plant material and addictive, chemical additives, I'm sorry, chemical additives that are responsible for their psychoactive, mind-altering effects. And so, basically what they're taking is some kind of a plant product, they could go out to somebody's lawn, they could cut the grass or pull the grass up, dry that, and then they're spraying this chemical on this product, put it into a package, and people are buying that and smoking it, using it. So, that's how simple this spice is. It's not the dry product that is getting them the high, it's the chemical that's sprayed onto that dried product. So they could use anything, any type of a plant material to make that happen. Spice products are sold as incense, or they look like potpourri. They are abused mainly by smoking, sometimes the spice is mixed with marijuana, or it's prepared as an herbal infusion for drinking. The synthetic cannabinoids that users claim mimics THC, the active ingredient in marijuana. Other negative effects, they include rapid heart rate, vomiting, agitation, confusion, hallucinations, physical impairments such as what we would see in field sobriety tests for a drunk driver, where their balance is, their sway, they can't put their finger to their nose, things of that nature are very similar. We actually have a video, we weren't able to attach it to the presentation, just because it would take more time than we would want to spend, where a person that was under the influence of spice was going through field sobriety tests, and it's uncanny how similar it is to somebody that's under the influence of alcohol. Spices, spice can also raise blood pressure and cause reduced blood supply to the heart, and in a few cases, been associated with heart attacks, regular users experience withdrawals and addiction symptoms. Authorities have seen spice and bath salts involved in suicides, strokes, psychotic breaks, self-mutilation, car crashes and killings, and one of the famous ones is the self-mutilation, or the mutilation of a person that was mentioned on the previous video, where a person tried to eat the face off of another person in Florida. Locally, we see the prosecution of a federal prison employee, we just recently saw this for second-degree murder, in which the victim and the defendant were known to have been under the influence of bath salts.
Melanie joins us now by satellite from our affiliate Wavy TV in Portsmouth, Virginia. Welcome to the show, Melanie.
So what are health officials saying is the big risk from these synthetic cannabinoids?
Well, the biggest risk is that you really have no idea what you're getting. The labeling on spice is extremely vague. Some of the samples that we purchased said things like "an aromatic blend, not for human consumption," so you basically have no idea what you're putting into your body.
But you guys did some tests on these substances, what did, what did they find?
They found all of the samples tested positive for JWH-080 and JWH-073. These are those synthetic cannabinoids. They basically mimic the effects of smoking marijuana, except they're a lot more dangerous. There have been reports of individuals having seizures, elevated heart rate, sometimes just becoming extremely agitated.
So, we picked this up at a local smoke shop for $90, this is affectionately known as spice. Like Melanie said, it says on the bottle, "Not intended for human consumption," but the concern, as you look at this animation with me, is that when you smoke something like this, it almost immediately gets into your bloodstream and goes directly to your brain. These are receptors for the cannabinoids. You're seeing the cannabinoids come in there, when that occurs, your brain reacts. You're going to see some areas of the brain light up here, and that's the brain stem, and that's the frontal lobe, and one of the concerns here with this area, this area, the frontal lobe, is where judgment takes place. And as that occurs with these unknown substances... And as that occurs with these unknown substances, not only may you lose your judgment, but much like in that video, people aren't making the best of decisions. Your brain is taken over by substances you don't even know what they are. That is such a concern.
Okay, so why do we need an ordinance banning sales and possession of Spice and bath salts? Well, I think all of this information justifies that. Spice mixtures have been easy to purchase in smoke shops, head shops and gas stations, as well as on the internet. Chemicals used in Spice have a high potential for abuse, and there is no medical benefit. The DEA has designated these five active chemicals most frequently found in Spice as Schedule I Controlled Substances, making it illegal to sell, buy or possess them. That's at the federal level, not at the local level. On March 1st, 2011, the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration banned these five synthetic chemicals. Currently, now, there are 38 states that have banned the sale of Spice. California is one of those. On January 1st, 2012, Assembly Bill 486 went into effect. And according to California Health and Safety Code 11357.5, it's illegal to sell or possess to sell, but not illegal to possess for personal use. The offense is a misdemeanor punishable by six months in county jail or a fine not exceeding $1,000. So again, it is illegal to sell or possess for sale, but it's not illegal to have personal Again, this reiterates the same. Any synthetic cannabinoid compound or any synthetic cannabinoid derivative to any person possession for sale is guilty of a misdemeanor. One important clarification is that although it's illegal to sell, again, I reiterate this again, individuals may possess the drug for personal use, and there is no age restriction. This means that anyone, even children, may possess the drug for personal use. What we're suggesting is that we create an ordinance that will make it illegal to possess and to possess for sale and to sell any of the spice or bath salts in our city. And again, creating this ordinance will allow us to be able to, the law enforcement, to be able to enforce this drug from continuing to poison our streets, our young people on our streets, and give us a tool to be able to enforce that. This is a statistic, in 2012, marijuana was used by high school seniors, 36% of the high school seniors. But second to that was synthetic marijuana or Spice. So it's moving its way up. And again, what we're asking is council direction to be able to prepare an ordinance banning the sale, distribution, furnishing, giving, offering to sell, dispensing, distribution, possession for sale, and possession of synthetic spices and synthetic bath salts. There'd be a little cost to the city's general fund, other than staff time preparing that. And more would be, more information on the cost would be available as we put this ordinance together. And with that, open up for questions. And I have my drug recognition expert, Sergeant Joe Stetson's here to help me out if there's any questions on the technical aspect of the drugs. You made it, Joe. He was, he was talking about agents, Stetson, a while ago.
Right, I almost got demoted.
Joe, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
No, we talked with the chief, one of the issues is just, it's a public health concern. A lot of this stuff, what's not addressed in the, in the presentation is that these drugs were made in China mostly, sometimes from the Middle East. You don't know what the chemical is. We banned one, they put another one on. The plant material is, who knows, and it's constantly changing. We deal with the issue now, we're dealing with people that are overdosing, which is, it's been teenagers up to people in their 50s, vehicle collisions. You see people passed out in different places, holding a bag of Spice. And there's really nothing we can do about it. A lot of times, they come out of it pretty fast, and so they're, they're a little unstable, but they're back to walking normal. It's not like someone who's under the influence of alcohol. I think the idea behind the ordinance for the possession and the use in public is really just to deter an open-air drug market with chemicals that are constantly changing in the, in the designer drug world.
Absolutely. Councilman Hohndahl?
Glad to have the information. The concern is that, why has it taken so long to get, I guess, within the system, you know about it, but we've never heard about it. Mayor did find out, but the idea, it's taken a long time to get here. I'm glad it's here, but the general public don't, don't know anything about it, except the young end of the, the old duffers like me, they don't know anything about it. But it's, it's terrible to see what we have and what, what this documentation had. And when I said bath salts, I thought it's something you took your bath in. Supposedly that's what it is, but they're putting it in water and drinking it. And I think it's sad, it's gotta be out there, the public goes, so the parents know, and other public individuals know what's going on out there. I'm really pleased it's here tonight.
Councilman Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna hold my questions till after public comment, but I do have one question for either Sergeant Stetson or the police chief. If we pass this tonight, will you be able to arrest our mayor, because he has some Spice right here? And I'm willing to approve this right now if you're, yeah, wait for public comment then all.
All right. Thanks, guys. Okay, we're gonna open this for public comment, and I'd like to invite Chuck, my undercover agent, who made my last round of buys because my wife's cover was blown after the first round. So, and Chuck, you wanna borrow the props?
Thank you, John. My name is Chuck Matson, I'm the site supervisor for Coast Valley Substance Abuse Treatment Center here in Long Poak. I'd like to thank the council tonight for, for even hearing and, you know, discussing the possibility of having a ban like this in our community. I could go all night with the personal experiences that I've had with clients, with families of clients, over the past three years with Spice. Adolescent overdoses. The only time that I've been attacked in program is by somebody under the influence of Spice. I could go on and on all night. What bothers me the most is that about two and a half years ago, Spice was a big problem in the community. At that time, they were selling it in our smoke shops for about $20, $30 a bag. Within the last year, it's gone down to $5, $6 a bag. And the availability of it is every smoke shop. You know, John handed me these packets, and, and these are packets that I personally went to each smoke shop on a Sunday, never purchasing Spice before, and was able to go in and ask for, and they immediately sold it to me. Each and every smoke shop. So, I read in an article today that one of the smoke shop owners denied this, he sold it to me. And knowing and having conversations with my clients that are adolescents and telling me things like, "We can get fronts from the store owners to get Spice. We don't even have to pay them." The ingredients have changed. In the presentation, they talked about, you know, the different ingredients that are sprayed on the, on the herbs. Those substances have changed. Every time the DEA or the federal government puts out a ban on one of the ingredients, they change it. What we've tried to do as, as a treatment provider is to buy tests so we can monitor the use of our clients using Spice. Because if they can't use marijuana, they go to Spice. These tests are double, triple the cost of our normal urine analysis test, and as soon as we get them, they're changing the ingredients. I have had clients come in and say, "I smoked today." I will test them, they will come up clean, even though they're admitting that they smoked Spice that same day. I can't, I can't go enough into how these substances have affected every dynamic of our community. While I was at the smoke shop in the Albertsons parking lot, purchasing Spice, there was a regular homeless that sits on the corner in front of Ross, we see there every weekend, buying $40 worth of Spice in front of me in line. So we know where our money is going if we're donating to the homeless. I have 120 clients in program at any time, and, and the stories continue to go on and on. You know, there is, there is no reason why the, why the city of Long Poak can't ban these substances. I, for the first time, saw on the presentation that it's illegal to possess, to sell Spice. Stores in our community have been selling it for years. Why isn't anything being done? We need to save these lives. You know, two years ago, I had a 14-year-old adolescent smoke one hit of Spice and end up in the, in the emergency room for 10 days. You don't know the damage this is doing until you see the family members of the children that are going to the emergency room after their kids have overdosed on Spice. It's, it's, the frustration from, as a treatment provider, is, is, I can't explain the frustration trying to monitor and work with the clients that continue to smoke Spice. There's nothing we can do. It's not like methamphetamine, it's not like marijuana, it's not like heroin. They can buy it from a store, and they're buying it for $5, $6. There's nothing we can do to test for it. There's nothing we're able to do. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, this ban, we can enforce it, we can do whatever we need to do to make this step, you know? And what I've been told is, we do this in Long Poak, Santa Barbara County is the next step. You know, we can continue this on. I, I got an email from Joyce Howerton today that said, "Let's make this a state thing. Let's, let's continue this process. Let's make this huge. Let's continue this on." It's, I can't say enough. You know, this is, this Spice, and, and, you know, I haven't seen so much of the bath salts in, in treatment, but the Spice has been an ongoing problem, you know? And, and I'm just passionate about making this happen. So, so I really appreciate, you know, the city council hearing this tonight, and, and I hope that there's no questions why this shouldn't go through, so.
Okay, and I'd like to invite any of the rest of you that are out there to come on up and talk to us. Come on, you guys, you came down here. Come on. Yeah, there's one brave guy. Come on down.
Hello there, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Nelson Hohndahl, I'm a juvenile institutional officer for Santa Barbara County probation. I actually, in my facet, I'm an aftercare officer when the kids get released from camp, and I try to help them assimilate back into our community. The one thing that I've noticed in the last couple of years is that this drug has been, wow, it's been kind of like enemy number one, because trying to keep these kids clean when they come back to the community is, is very important. So then, what happens with these kids when we're testing them, they're coming clean for everything, but they're trying to find something that we can't test for, and it's been this Spice. And through my experience also, because I worked at the juvenile hall, because it's been around for about three or four years, I want to say, we started seeing some kids that came in, and it's interesting, we saw the doctor's show there, about how it must affect the frontal lobe and the judgment, and you'll see kind of a dumbing down of some of these kids, and it doesn't take much of it. It's maybe just a prolonged experience, maybe two to three months of this drug. It doesn't have to take years to start seeing some changes in the way that they're reacting and their judgment. So I came to this council meeting to back up Chuck. He's been the frontrunner on this, because we discussed this way back when, and he's been really making the push to try to make sure that these kids don't get the access, the easy availability. Because it's funny, when I talk to quite a few of my young men, and they tell me how easy it is to get Spice, easier than alcohol, easier than marijuana, than anything else that's out there. And again, because all you gotta do is, yeah, go to some of these, some of these shops, they don't even try to ID them, they'll front it, just like Chuck was talking about it, and they'll just say, "Hey, just come back later on." And what I've noticed is that there's a progression to this Spice. Initially, it just got you high, but there wasn't really like an addiction, an additive that would give you that addiction to it. But these later strains is starting to give you that addiction, where these kids, when they're not smoking it, they get very sick. They start to vomit, they get these horrible headaches, it takes them days to try to get it out of their system, where they're not feeling these sick symptoms. So these chemists are getting very smart. They're trying to make it so that these kids or these young adults, whoever's abusing this drug, continues to keep coming back and keep coming back. So again, whatever we can do, go ahead and ban it in the city, I think it's the most important thing that we gotta do now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to talk to us? All right, let's try this, show of hands. How many of you out there want us? Uh, one more. Come on down, then we'll go for the show of hands.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilman. I'm Pat Brady from Good Samaritan, we're also a treatment provider here in town. We don't see as much of this or as often as Chuck does. We don't have, excuse me, we don't have a young people program, and our people are live in for the most part. But we do see it. It is an ongoing thing to try and curb that, because as he said, there is no test. As soon as we buy the very expensive test, it changes. And so, it makes monitoring for us of our clients hard, because you think they're under the influence, you can't, you test them and they come up clean. And it is just a devastating drug, especially Spice. We don't see as much of the bath salts as we do Spice. And I think this would be, if you were to pass this ordinance, I think it would be a huge step in trying to control this. There's always going to be something, there's always going to be one that they're going to try that can't be tested. But if we can be in the forefront and be proactive, as Chuck has been, I think we may get a handle on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, everybody here that thinks we should pass this, raise your hand. Let the record show that every hand in the audience is up, and some people are cheating and putting up two. Okay, we're gonna close oral comment on this, and we're gonna come back. Chief, I think one other thing that we didn't mention is, when we went around this the first time and went out and made buys, then, I don't remember who you sent out to talk to the shop owners to try to get some voluntary compliance.
Right.
Maybe you'd recap that for us?
Well, we did send out some of our staff to try to get voluntary compliance with the business owners, talked to them. Some of them assured us that they were not selling the product, some of them said they were. We, that was the first volley that we did out there in the community to try to get that compliance. Since then, we have purchased the product recently from a couple of, one, one particular store. We do know that there, there are others that are selling it. We do also know that there are, there is at least one that is telling us that they're not selling it. So, what we can do with this ordinance is start to actually be a little more aggressive, more, far more aggressive, going after the businesses, but also have a tool for the person that is already in possession of it through the internet or whatever means, and breaking the law, a city ordinance for possession.
Thank you. Councilman Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I, I'm glad I came here tonight, because when I first read this report, I says, you know, is this like a plastic bag ordinance or something like that? Because I had, I'd never heard of Spice, I didn't know anything about it. Learned something when I started talking to some of the teenagers in the community that, you know, it's around, some of them have used it. But I, I talked to Chief Ralston about this, because I did have some concerns. I mean, there's been a law against selling it for a number of years, and we have not...
Just, just for one year. It was taking effect in 2012.
Okay, but we haven't, we haven't enforced it. And that, that concerned me, that we haven't enforced it. But now you tell me that we, we have some investigations going on right now.
Right.
Okay, good. The other thing is, is mentioned that there's no way to detect it, so I'm concerned about the enforcement. How are we going to enforce this, once we pass it?
Again, it's possession. What we're, what our ordinance is asking for is for possession, not under the influence. It's difficult to be able to detect under the influence. When we do an exam for somebody being under the influence of methamphetamine, or cocaine, or heroin, we have the ability to do a urine test, to be able to test, to, to be able to prove that the person's under the influence. Not so with Spice and bath salts, because of the chemical, because of the change, staying one step ahead of the law. So what we're asking for is the ordinance, just merely for the possession of, of the drug.
So, the person would have to have it on their person when you stop them, or when you...
Right.
Okay. And, I don't know how important this is, but, so you pull a car over, there's three people in the car, and there's a bag of Spice in the backseat. Do all three get cited, or the driver of the car?
It's, it's possible we could arrest or cite all three. If one of them admits to the possession, we could, you know, it really, it just depends on how the... depends on how the circumstances unfold, where was it found in the car, who was sitting in that area of the car, uh, you know, there, several variables to that.
Okay. Okay, um, yeah, like I say, obviously I'm joking, I'm glad I came tonight, because I was not aware of how dangerous this stuff is. The videos are pretty obvious, the, um, discussion today by the public, I mean, it made an impression on me, so I'm, I'm glad you're here tonight. And I, I'm just hoping that if we pass this tonight, it's both the sale, you're gonna enforce the sale, but not only the sale, but then the possession as well, so.
And, and there are several cities, Redlands is one that just recently, as of October, or I'm sorry, August 16th this year, passed a similar ordinance for the same reason. So, um, we're trying to get ahead of it in Santa Barbara County, and I'm sure that there'll be other cities that'll be following suit.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rondo?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is that I'm glad we're gonna go ahead, and it looks like we'll have to prepare an ordinance, so we're just saying, "Do it." But, you know, and there'd be people that say, "Well, they can go out in the county to buy it." Well, we can stop it inside, do everything we can, but make sure then push the county to do the same thing.
Right.
And I think they will, and it's, and Bob brought it up to us, it's interesting that it's taken us a long time to find out there is something like this out there, and it's scary that this type of thing is out there. And I did talk to my daughter-in-law, and my stepson, and, "Oh, yeah, they knew about it, they didn't, we weren't using it or anything like that." I said, "Yeah, it's just one of those things that's out to the younger individuals." And so, the sooner we get this done, the better off we are. The only problem that I have is that it's taken us so long to even get it to here.
Sure.
If it's been around, and, and, like I say, it started out at forty dollars, now it's down to five dollars, are they gonna bring it in and get it down to a dollar? Now, the thing is, is that in your preparation of an ordinance, the people who sell it, and they are illegally selling it now, right? Am I right?
Well, again, we can use that, the, the state law, the 11357.5, to prosecute for sales, and there was a recent case in Ventura County, um, where that was applied, uh, just a recent conviction on that. So, it's brand new, uh, this, this drug is, is brand new on the scene, um, in the big scheme of things. Having this, you know, in our communities for five years now, where methamphetamine, cocaine, heroin, all, those drugs go back many, many, many more years, so, um, you know, reacting to this now, we're getting ahead of it, is, uh, again, ahead of most other communities.
Well, I, I agree with you on that, and that's why I'm saying, I'm real pleased we have it here now, before us, because even the individuals talking about it, and it is scary, when you talk about young people getting, getting a hold of that, and that's, and, you know, if you look at it, the young people in our society, who's gonna be running the nation in the future? We just don't want a bunch of bath salts running the nation.
And, and with that, what I would say is, the, the number one deterrent to, um, any drug is education, and, you know, what we do in our community to educate our young people, that will make more of a difference than anything else that we do, uh, all the drug enforcement that we do, um, education is going to make the bigger difference.
Chuck, when you went out and bought, how much bag did you pay for it?
Five or six dollars a piece.
Okay, so in a year, from when my wife went around and bought it, it was ten bucks a bag, so now it's five or six.
What did you pay yesterday?
Ten.
We paid ten for it yesterday.
Price went up, you, Chuck does a better deal, you should let him negotiate for you. Well, and I, um, when Dale came to me about a year ago about this, a, a family member of his had just been in the emergency room for an extended period of time, and was completely addicted, and, you know, just the fact that it was legal, you could just go buy it, was what, really what, um, caused the kids to use it. Well, it's, it's legal, so it must be okay, and there's a couple more people in the audience that I've chatted with recently who have family members who've been using it. "Oh, it's legal, it must be okay." But it's not, and, and you know what you're gonna get? How much did they spray on? You know, there was a one pass with the sprayer, was there two passes? So the, the quality control isn't there, obviously. Um, so if no one objects, I'd like to make the motion on this one. Councilmember Lingle?
That's fair, that's fine that you can make it, but I'd like you to make one change, you know, before you approve it.
Sure.
Because right now, it says, provide, or, uh, provide direction to the staff to prepare an ordinance banning possession. I want to say banning the sale and/or possession.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may-
Yes, sir.
If the state already bans the sale, then we actually are preempted from being able to ban the sale. It's the possession that the police department is concerned about, because we already have laws that prohibit the sale.
Is the law we have now, Chief, is it adequate on the sale side, do you think?
Oh, sure it is, yes. Uh, possession for sales, the 11357.5 is, is adequate.
So you don't need-
Again, it's a, it's a misdemeanor. A thousand-dollar fine, uh, or six months, months in jail would be the same as a citation under the, um, city, as a, um, ordinance violation.
Okay. Councilmember Rondo?
The question I have on it, if you catch them one time, what about the second time? You know, these guys don't stop selling on the first go-round. And can, can you add to it, double, triple, quadruple it as you catch them?
We, we can't, up to the limit that the law provides the city to allow, which is a thousand dollars or a year in jail, for, for each violation.
Um, Joe, would that be an advantage above what the state currently has, or not?
I'm sorry?
Well, you, you know, there's a, so the, the state law bans, um, sale, and it's a thousand-dollar fine and six months. We could claim on top of that, or not?
Not with regard to the sale.
Okay.
With regard to possession.
Okay. Okay, I would move that the staff be directed to prepare an ordinance banning the possession of synthetic spice and synthetic bath salts, and return to the council in the shortest period of time possible.
Second.
And, is there any other discussion? And can we vote, please? That passes three zero and two absent, and I would tell you that I'm sure the two that were absent would have voted with it, too. Thank you all for coming, and thanks for supporting. I didn't clap.
Did you, are you allowed to clap?
Okay, and now for the next really exciting thing that will top the, uh, the financial plan, we have the resurvey of speed zones and adoption of ordinance, 159513, re-establishing and establishing speed limits on certain streets. And Mike, in this, you cover how you, why we have to do this, right?
I do, so. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name's, uh, Michael Luther, I'm the Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, and as the mayor said, I'm here to talk about, uh, re-establishing and establishing speed zones, uh, on various segments of streets in the city. Uh, this, this presentation covers twenty-five street segments that are classified as collectors or arterials within the city. And I'll go through why we establish, but, uh, the result of the study is that two of the existing segments are proposed for a five mile an hour speed increase, two segments are proposed for a five mile an hour decrease. Twelve of the existing segments have, uh, no speed change, and we will also be establishing nine new segments that were, don't previously have a, uh, speed established. So in California, speed limits are governed by the California Vehicle Code, and it, uh, basically establishes, uh, there's designated speeds, uh, which are called prima facie speed limits. Prima facie means on the face of it, and those are basically, the definition is that they're considered reasonable and prudent under normal conditions. Uh, basically, California speeds are governed by, they, they assume that the majority of the drivers will be driving at a reasonable and prudent speed for conditions. So some of the statutory limits are, um, fifteen miles per hour in alleys, blind railroad crossings, blind intersections, uncontrolled intersections, and then there's twenty-five mile an hour in established school zones, residential zones, business zones. And to establish, the cities have the ability to establish other speed limits with an engineering and traffic study, which is what we're proposing tonight. And the reason you'd wanna do that is so that you can enforce speed limits with radar. Uh, in order to do that, you have to update this engineering and traffic study every five years, and there's certain criteria in the law that allows for extension of those to five, I mean, from five to seven to ten years, if criteria are met. And the reason, if you don't establish the speeds based on the California law, you're gonna create a, what's known as a speed trap. So if you artificially set a speed limit low, and you go and you enforce it with radar, uh, it'll typically get thrown out in court if the violator challenges it. So what we do to establish a, uh, engineering and traffic study is we go, we go out with a radar gun, and we, uh, record the free-flow speed for, uh, a hundred vehicles, and with that, you determine the critical speed. The critical speed is the speed at which eighty-five, the eighty-fifth percentile, basically eighty, eighty-five percent of the people are driving at that speed or slower. Uh, we look at, uh, accident history, a minimum of two years, in this case, we looked at the three-year accident history. Uh, you look at, uh, conditions on the road that aren't prevalent to a driver, you know, if there's a, maybe a, a park that's not visible as you're driving down the road, something like that. Uh, you can look at residential density, pedestrians, and bicycle users. So as I said here, this just, uh, recaps the eighty-fifth percentile. So for example, if, uh, we did our radar study and we came up with the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-eight miles per hour, what the law says is, you round that to the nearest five miles an hour, so we'd have to round up to forty miles per hour. And that would be the typical posted speed limit for that street, but then we take into the other factors, and we can, if we, the law says if we were rounding up, we can automatically round down to five miles an hour, so if we automatically were at thirty-eight, and we rounded up to forty, without doing anything, we could round it down to thirty-five miles per hour, and make that the posted speed limit. Or if we take, if, for example, if it was thirty-seven miles per hour, so you rounded the nearest, you round to thirty-five miles per hour, we can take into those other factors, uh, residential density, accident history, uh, using engineering judgment, we could potentially set the speed limit at thirty-five miles per hour, or we could make it thirty miles per hour. So what, uh, what I'm proposing here is that the city council introduce the proposed ordinance, 159513, establishing and re-establishing the speed limits as outlined in the engineering and traffic study dated October 4th, 2013. The speed survey map here, a little hard to read, but this outlines, uh, the speed limits we'd be establishing with the adoption of the ordinance. So the ones that are listed as NA, those are the street segments that don't currently have a prima facie speed limit set. And you can see the, the other, I can't really see it from here, but there's the four segments that are changing by five miles per hour. And then the next map here just shows if the ordinance was adopted, what all the speed zones in the city would be. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Luther, you just explained why we're, why we're doing it, the restrictions you I'm looking at Seventh Street, and we have three different speed zones on Seventh Street, starting from Ocean to, uh, North Avenue. Starts at thirty miles an hour, then goes to thirty-five, and back down to thirty. Yeah. I don't know about anyone else, but I'm driving up Seventh Street, and I'm not continually looking at the speed signs. Is there a way that we can just make that all thirty, thirty-five? I know you just explained why you can't, I mean, you know, why you shouldn't, but it seems like it makes more sense to make Seventh Street either thirty or thirty-five, whichever is, you've got three, three speed zones in a stretch of a couple miles.
That's what the survey came to, so if I look here, um, I believe it, you know, so the thirty-five mile per hour section we're talking about there would be Seventh Street, Laurel to College.
Mm-hmm.
That block has residential housing on one side, the other side is a concrete wall, so there's no driveways, no access. Um, if you look at the, if I look at the eighty-fifth percentile speed on that street, it was thirty-eight miles per hour. So using the law, I had to round up to forty.
But, but could you make it thirty?
Well, you could make it thirty, but then you would not be able to enforce the speed limit. If, if I look at that, that chart again, so if I, if you set the speed at thirty miles per hour, the fiftieth percentile, which is the speed that half of the people are driving slower, and half are driving faster than the, the fiftieth percentile, that speed on that section is thirty-three miles per hour. So if you set the speed at thirty miles per hour, you're automatically putting more than fifty percent of the people breaking the law. Additionally, additionally, uh, you know, when you look at accident history, that segment has less than fifty percent of the average accident rate for the, for the state, so it has a very low accident rate, so there's really no justification to, to lower it.
Yeah, my, my fear is that most people will be, it starts at thirty, so, well, if they travel thirty the entire distance-
Well, it's, it's, you gotta also look at that, that whole section is broken up by stop signs.
Okay.
So it's, it's not one continuous road, it's, it's segments, so you're going from stop to stop.
Okay, it's, it seems like a strange way of doing it, but I understand, I, I see what you're doing, and I guess you're abiding by the law, which will keep Chief Ralston off you, and he's gonna be arresting people using spice.
Councilmember Rondo?
Yeah, it's, I don't see it on the lap, on the map here, but, uh, a lady who owns some property on Willow, on the county side of Willow, you know, the south side, north side is in the city, and the north, south side is in the, yeah. Received a letter from the city, says you gotta cut part of a tree back so you can put a sign up fifteen miles an hour. I don't see that in your recommendations, and she has the letter from the city of Long Po, saying, "They're gonna put a-"
Well, that's, that's a residential street over there?
Yes.
So it's, it's, it's prima facie, but the reason for that is, um, that is an unpaid section of road.
Mm-hmm.
It's gravel.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, but-
Yeah.
I don't see it on your maps.
No, it wouldn't be on the map.
Okay. But if, I, there is no sign up there now.
Correct.
And they're gonna be, would put one, and, but we gotta cut some of the tree up.
It's gonna be an advisory sign.
Oh, okay.
Advising them that it's gravel.
Travel and drive fifteen miles an hour, okay. And on that, on the south side is still in the county, and on the north side's in the city.
Well, the entire road is in the city.
Well, all of Willow is?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was the other way around, okay.
The property on the south side is in the county.
That's right, south side of the road, okay. That's right, south side of the road, okay.
I think this question might be for the chief. Chief, I'm just dying to know how we could have such a high accident rate on Western Avenue, out there in the middle of nowhere, west of Z Street. Do you have any idea what the problem is out there? It's our second highest accident area in town.
Not specifically, I would say probably just speed as a primary factor.
Fast and stupid. Okay, seeing no other lights at this time, I'll open this for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to talk to us about this? That was easy, no one. Okay, we'll come back to the council and the staff is looking for an approval of ordinance 1595. Who would like to make a motion?
I move we accept staff recommendations.
Second. Okay. And is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we vote, please? And that passes three, zero, and two absent. And now, item number twelve, adopting resolution 588213, delegating authority to execute documents to participate in the Long Oak Federal Bureau of Prisons Community Service Program. Kevin McKeon, and I'd also like to recognize the warden from the Long Oak prison who will be speaking to us next. Thank you, Warden.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and the public. As you just said, I'm Kevin McKeon, the Public Works Director. And the item tonight, I'm excited to announce that will be another tool in our toolkit in the Parks Department to maintain what we have. As you know, we're, Parks, our park system in Long Oak is something to be proud of. We have a lot of acreage to take care of. It's a very mature park system, meaning there's a lot of infrastructure that's, was built in the seventies and sixties and still needs some love. And we are challenged to keep up with the maintenance. So we're full-time mowing the grass and killing the gophers, but we don't have a lot of time to do painting and those, kind of the more intricate or detailed maintenance. The mayor passed me a note, probably a month ago now, maybe a month and a half, saying that we should look into this. And the more I looked into it, the more excited I got about it. This is a mature program that the Bureau of Prisons has developed. It has a demonstrated success rate and been implemented at various locations throughout, throughout the country. And I know the warden has some examples to share with us, so I'll kind of pause there and let him come up and explain a little bit more about it.
Thank you for coming out late in the evening, Warden Ives.
And up early in the morning again. Let me start these pictures around so that everybody can have a glance at those. First, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. It is my pleasure to come, even though the hour is later for me, I know it's just as late for all of you. So basically what this is, the Bureau of Prisons has long had this program, this community service program that allows, there's actually laws that allow us, federal laws that allow us, allow you, nonprofit organizations, city governments, state governments to use inmate labor to benefit different organizations. I've been in the prison system almost twenty-eight years and my last three assignments as the warden, some of which has been in Kentucky and then also up in Susanville, California, out near Hurlong, and throughout that time, I've been able to assist different cities in using inmate labor to provide labor which doesn't cost the city anything. Now, we all know that resources are very tight nowadays and it only makes sense to be able to do this. We can use inmate labor to do just about anything, and the program actually works a couple of different ways. One is you can take the inmates into the community, the other side is you bring work to the prison. So, and if you're not aware, and if you'd like a tour, come out for a tour, we'll show you this. We've got four different institutions out at the federal prison here in town. There's four different institutions. We've got two minimums, minimum security facilities, a low-security facility and a medium-security facility. That totals about thirty-five hundred inmates, it's three thousand five hundred inmates is what we keep out there. On the minimum security side, that's the only inmates that we allow obviously to come into the community, just the minimum security. And there's about five hundred of those inmates. Now, we're not suggesting that we send all five hundred of these inmates out because not all five hundred of them would be able to come out, even though they're minimum security. Every day, well, five days a week, we send about forty inmates out to Vandenberg, they're out there every day. We send another group of inmates that are out Sutton Ranch, they're out at, throughout the fields here where, on land that belongs to the military, where we're farming the land for them, we're roaming our cows out there. We send inmates on the road that are delivering milk to other federal prisons and they're doing that seven days a week. We've got lots of these minimum security inmates that are available to come into the community to do work. Again, it's not all five hundred and we carefully select the inmates that would be coming into the community. It's been proven, as already been indicated, that it's useful, that the city is going to be the ones that benefit from this. The inmates like doing it. Now, I understand there may be some concern about, well, what's it like about having these inmates in the town? They're already in your town, if you don't know this. They're already here. Some of those pictures you see, we, the Chamber of Commerce recently had a job fair here in town, the inmates were used to set up all the tables and chairs. They've already done, this is just down the street from you guys, we're already doing this stuff. And again, we're sending them out to Vandenberg every day, we're doing a lot of stuff, we've done a lot of projects for the, for the schools here in town, for the high schools specifically, where they brought work to us. And then we've accomplished the work there at the site and then brought it back, once it was completed. So of those minimum security inmates, we have a classification system that we use to determine whether or not the inmates appropriate, first of all, to be in a minimum security facility. They all are, these five hundred of them are. And then of those five hundred, only a small number of them are going to be able to have what we call community custody, which means they're able to be in the, in the community. Of those inmates that we've got out there, the minimum security inmates, about seventy-five percent of them are drug offenders, first-time drug offenders. None of them are violent offenders, none of them. So you've got about seventy-five percent are drug offenders and of those, about half of those were found in possession of a drug that's illegal, about half of those. The other half were transporting it. We've got inmates that are, were growing marijuana, we've got inmates that were, another fifteen percent of those inmates were, are currently in prison because of extortion or bribery, tax evasion. These are non-violent offenders, the community's gonna be safe. Again, we're already doing this. So it makes sense, if you guys want to take advantage of it, I mean, they're available. Any questions?
Councilor Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Warden, thank you again for being here. And I know they're already out there, you've done some work for us over at the Veterans' Memorial Building on several occasions, and I thank you for it. So the public went, will the inmate be in a jumpsuit, will they just be in regular civilian clothes doing work? How are they identified and do they have any supervision out there?
The inmates that we would send out into the community are gonna wear what they'd wear at the prison, which are green-colored clothes. So they're gonna be in the same clothes, we don't put them in bright orange or bright red jumpsuits, they're gonna be in their green uniform of the day. The supervision, because the law requires, has to be provided by whoever's borrowing the inmate. And because they're community custody, our policy says they only have to be supervised face-to-face, somebody's gotta see them every two hours. You can see them more often than that, but somebody's gotta see them every two hours.
And the person that has to see them, it's not one of our police officers, it could be one of our staff here at the city?
Yeah, anyone that volunteers. And before we allow them to do that, we of course give them some training, so you under, we share with them what the rules are. The inmate shouldn't, nobody should loan them a cellphone, nobody should take them into Seven-Eleven to buy them a soda pop. We'll send them out, if you're gonna have them all day long, we provide them a lunch. You don't have to give them anything, you just gotta pick them up, drop them off, and get them working.
Thank you.
Councilor Hombdahl?
I'm real pleased to see this happen, since I go out there once a month to each one of the three, so it's not the fourth one, but the three of them. And it is interesting, the ones at the camp, very free of what they're doing, and it is, it's the drugs that have got them there. And they are, and I get along with them real well. And so I'm real pleased to see this happen, and I see the one thing that I've heard before, and I think the city had backed off at one time because we had to have somebody watch them. And I'm glad to see that, we're putting that together so somebody can watch them coming in, because they are good workers, we watch them, they do the death building and everything else. And they like to come into the community and be part of the community.
They do.
And I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned, when the warden and I talked about it, was that it's, it's kind of rehabilitation, it, you know, it beats sitting around doing nothing, and they like to do it.
They love to do it.
Yep. Okay. So we'll open this to public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to talk about this? That was pretty easy, nobody, okay. And I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion on this, since it was something I kind of started out with. So I'll move that we adopt resolution 588213, delegating authority to execute documents to participate in the Federal Bureau of Prisons Community Service Program. And I'd be looking for a second.
Second.
And is there any other discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? And that passes three, zero, and two absent. And, Warden, if you don't run off, I have something else for you. It won't take but just a minute to get through our last little bit. Any written communications?
Nothing.
Oral communication is your last two minutes to speak to us.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I just wanted to mention, Ken had so many things to catch up on, on what he did September and October. He neglected to say that he attended the domestic violence vigil, which was outstanding. And I think it's really appropriate that Ken mentioned, particularly since you've declared November the end of domestic violence month. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. It was an outstanding program this year.
If you'd just take a minute and recap it for the viewers.
Recap?
The program. You were there.
I did say my name.
She did.
It's getting late. Yes, the, it started out with the walk and the vigil up H Street and back. They carried the silhouettes of representing people who had, who have died due to violence. And we went back, we had, the alley dancers danced and they were terrific, they were, they were so good. They did two performances and they had a woman speak, she's from Santa Maria, but she, she really talked about her life as a victim of domestic violence from the time that she was just three years old. It was just heartbreaking. And it's taken her a long time to recover, but with the support, she's been able to do that. She attended a six-week program recently, I don't recall which program she went to, but she plans on helping in the community now with the training that she's received. Our police chief was there. I don't recall everything that was said, there were different speakers, there were high school kids that sang and talked and they were all excellent, very talented kids. I don't recall what all was on the program. It was just a very touching evening, it was just really a very touching evening, and what you say is true, if you're aware of somebody, a child or somebody being exposed to violence, it is every much your duty to do something about that, even if it's not to interfere but to call the police, depending on the situation, you certainly would want to be safe. But I recall we were talking about this with child abuse with a friend, and her and her husband used to go to a restaurant a couple times a week, and there's a hotel right next door where it's like monthly rental-type hotel, and she would hear this child just screaming, just screaming when they would go. And she thought, well, you know, maybe it's bedtime and, you know, they have trouble getting the kid to bed at that time of the evening, that the child ended up being killed. Horrendous abuse, it's just heartbreaking. So I did want to mention that, that Ken did attend that as well.
Thank you. One of the victims that was memorized or memorialized, so to speak, was the Bustos woman who was killed in Long Oak last year. And so there was a little mention of her at the ceremony as well. Our first domestic violence death in a very long time, not a very happy day. Okay, council requests and reports from the right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have not much to report since I was on vacation for two weeks and I had a wonderful time. But, um, let's see, I guess it was Friday, October 31st, I attended the Economic Action Summit in Buellton, which Mr. Rustini also attended that he forgot to mention. That was at no city expense, though. But what I really want to do is I want to remind everyone that this Friday, we've got the big game, and I just want to really thank Foursquare Church, they've stepped up again as they do so often in this community. And they're co-hosting the big game, post-game party at the Aquatic Center, and it's for ages, grades nine through twelve. There's food, games, music, dancing, prizes all night long, and it's all free. I mean, this is something, I can't say enough about Pastor Federman and Foursquare for putting this thing on again. What a wonderful event. Gets kids off the street, gives them someplace to go. And it's amazing if you go there, it's kids from Cabrillo, kids from Long Oak, and they're just having a good time, no matter what the score of the game was, which of course Long Oak will win on Friday, so. Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Hombdahl? Okay, I've got a couple of things, it's been three weeks, so it's a little longer list. I was pleased to attend the Fillmore School where they received some tablets donated by the San Andres Band of the Chumash Indians, about a fourteen thousand dollar donation. Enjoyed the chamber luncheon the other day and the speaker. Enjoyed the food pantry open house, a year in their new location. And my wife enjoyed the Cop Topper Fest because I was gonna be camping that weekend, so I gave her my tickets and she and her friend went, and then I stayed home and was sick instead, so they really had a good time. I represented the city up along with Councilor Hombdahl at the Home Builders, Local Officials' Night and chatted with two home builders who were interested in building in Long Oak. We participated in the Boy Scout Dutch Oven Cook-Off to raise money, and I'm here to tell you, we did Long Oak Proud, we cooked the most beautiful pineapple upside-down cake and a couple of tubs of beef stew that were enjoyed by all. And then I was at the VMS Career Day, and I'm telling you, those eighth graders are a tough audience, you know, getting a laugh out of them is difficult. And then I attended the Colab Dinner the other night, I did sit with, with one of the folks there, but I paid my own bill, so I wasn't a guest of anybody. And the Toys for Tots kickoff was this morning, no, yesterday morning, forget what day it is. And I also had a number of meetings over the past two weeks, both the acting city administrator and I and myself individually with a number of economic development prospects, so many of the things that we have worked on for many years are coming home to roost. It's all good news. The Long Oak City Council therefore will adjourn to a joint meeting with the Public Safety Commission at six-thirty PM on, no, six o'clock PM for a closed session on Tuesday, November 12th.